I'll call the order of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, December 18th. We please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting today. We're going to do this in kind of a two parts. We're going to do what's on the agenda this morning if we can get through it all and then come back at 2:00 to finish a couple of other items. We're going to the Oregon National Guard Youth Challenge graduation today, which I don't know if maybe you've seen it before, but I it's we get invited to and we're looking forward to seeing that. So that's going to go on between those. So the first item on our agenda is citizen input. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda? Seeing that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there any exceptions or?
I just want to pull item four.
Okay. Oregon Health Authority Grant Agreement. Okay. Anything else?
So I have not been able to review the minutes, but if you have, I'm comfortable passing them if you both.
I did.
Yeah.
I did, but those were the two meetings I wasn't at, so I realized I was the.
Yeah, so I didn't quite get there.
Do you want to go forward or do you want to?
Well, let's pull them so I can look at it.
Okay. So we'll proceed with items one, two, three, and five.
I move the consent agenda adjusted to be number one, two, three, and five.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion. Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeMone?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So then we'll move on to our first action item. Number four will be placed on the action agenda now. Janice, if you want to join us to discuss these. A lot of these were all actually fairly interesting, but we just decided we knew enough about them, the MedCor and the premises health and things, so we didn't need to talk about them. But a lot of health contracts, it seems like today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janice Gerson, Director of Deschutes County Behavioral Health. That's right. That's where I work. I am here to request board signature on a contract with the state of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, for the promoting integration of primary and behavioral health care funding that came again as a sort of afterthought to counties to fund efforts to support ongoing integration of primary care into behavioral health care settings. This particular source of revenue was funded at the national level to states for a five-year period. For us, that would mean from January 1 of 2019. So it's retroactive. The contract is retroactive to then through December 31, 2023. We actually will would utilize the funds beginning this fiscal year, fiscal year 20 through the end of fiscal year 24, so June 30, 2024. At this point, it funds a position that was in our fiscal year 20 budget. It is a supervisor for the Adult Outpatient Integrated Care Team. It also funds a half-time admin support technician. And this year, because of the late start, was able to support part of a peer support specialist that was also funded through opioid state targeted grant funds. And that is the gist of it.
Okay, I just pulled it because I noticed it started. Bless you. Oh, I hope you're not contagious.
Thank you for your nice thought.
Well, it's just we're talking help here. Well, yeah, but you might go to the roast bowl and I have to stay home. So anyway, no, it said it started really January 1st, but everybody was just so late in getting that through to us?
Yes, ma'am.
And we didn't have it into last year's budget then?
We did. We were able to put the position into the budget because we knew we had dollars for it. And then it took a very long time for the actual IGA amendment to come through that allows OHA to release the funds to us. And that's what this contract represents. So they were guaranteed dollars. They gave us permission to go ahead. We were able to put the position into the budget, the positions into the budget. And these are the dollars that fund and cover those costs.
Okay, so you're saying that OHA was really the person, the entity that was holding it up? I mean, the official paperwork then? So it's like 12 months late?
Yeah, I don't want to disparage them.
No, but I meant, you know.
They're challenged in contracting. It can take a while.
Okay, well, I was just like, okay, I was wondering if the federal government was that late?
No, the funds came to the states then.
It must have come in 18, maybe in like November of 18, I would think.
Yes, it came in 18. And at that time, there were, they requested that counties indicate interest. And for some reason, we had passed. That was before I was in this role. And then they had unspent dollars and said, we would like you to take these dollars. And we said, okay. And that's how it came to us. So it was pretty informal. And then we had to sort of back up and determine the utilization and work with them on the contract.
So Janice, how many people do you think this last year then, the program saw that integrated, you know, the mental health with the primary health care? Do you have any? Do you have any kind of numbers on that?
You mean overall or this particular?
This particular grant? I mean, don't.
So this particular grant is just starting because we waited to fill until we had the new position in the budget.
Okay, alright.
So that person has been in the role. I forget her exact start date. And that team has been in the process of forming and is now a separate team in our adult outpatient main clinic focused on this client population. The goal is that it serves approximately 200 people a year. And that's possible because even though the grant only funds the supervisory role, the team is made up of nine staff and one peer, I believe. I have to look at the roster again, that can serve a much larger group. And the group that this grant focuses on is a group of individuals that are shared between our behavioral health clinic and Mosaic Medical's primary care clinic and the Bridges Program, which is the, you may be familiar, is the program that serves people that have mental health and substance use disorders, chronic pain conditions, and are high utilizers of the ED. So that's really who we're trying to target with these grant dollars. We will also serve some of our own folks who we may not share with Mosaic, but present in the same way, have a mental health disorder, a serious and persistent mental health disorder, possibly a co-occurring substance use disorder, and a chronic health condition that they're trying to manage. Thank you.
So this, just to follow up on what Commissioner Adair was asking. So this is really consistent with the idea of having Mosaic in our building at Courtney? And is that when you say it's going to, where'd you say it was going to be centered at, this activity?
It's centered in our main clinic, and it is conditioned on having.
What's your main clinic?
Sorry, our main clinic is the Courtney Clinic that has primary care on site. And one of the terms of this agreement and why we were even eligible to receive the dollars is that you have at least 20 hours of primary care co-located. Otherwise, you don't qualify. So and we have 40 hours.
So this is kind of an effort to bring those two together, which we've heard a lot about in the last several years, as being a kind of a new model for both behavioral health and medical. Okay.
Well, it's good that it's a four-year kind of horizon on this effort, too. So the state's making that commitment. This is a path that we've gone down with a lot of the different community behavioral health clinic and stabilization centers. So this does kind of fit the model that we've been working with.
Yep.
All right. Seek a motion supportive of this or?
I'll move chair signature of document number 2019-805 Oregon Health Authority Grant Agreement for the Promoting Integration of Primary and Behavioral Health Care.
And I'll second it.
Any further comments? Commissioner DeMone?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Janice.
Thanks for explaining that, going through it. So our next item on the agenda is the Consideration of County Administrator Signature Document Number 2019-839 Cohesive Strategy Coordinator Contract. And this is an update of the contract, but I felt like since we were, we haven't heard really what Allison's doing and what kind of plans are, this is a good time to kind of catch up on it. There's at the back of it, most of the contracts is just contract, but there's a page 67 has the scope of activities, kind of. And that's the gist of kind of what the program's doing. And I think we may share some of the things we're hearing because of all the different things we see, too. So that we just, two of us just got back from the leadership summit in Portland where fire and forest was a big topic by a number of the big speakers there. So anyway, but go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ed Keith, County Forester. We do have an updated or contract for another year. Allison Green has been performing as the coordinator of the Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy under a contract. And this would renew that effort for another year with Allison continuing that coordination. You may recall, this is a five-county effort. So Deschutes County holds an agreement with Crook County, Jefferson County, Klamath County, and Lake County. And each of those counties pay into that effort along with a separate agreement with the Forest Service, who also provides funds. We're in our second year of that agreement. Counties have paid into that for the second year. We're just submitting, I'll actually today, actually be submitting reimbursement for the Forest Service for their year of funding. And they've added another year of funding to this as well. So from the funding side, we have those funds on hand and are expecting reimbursement for, Forest Service works on a reimbursement. Counties pay upfront into a fund that we hold. So we're in pretty good shape with the funds. I did check in with each of the county representatives before going ahead to renew this contract and ask for their input. They were all either neutral or in favor. The folks that were neutral hadn't really been able to participate much over the past year, so they're looking forward to participating a little bit more in the future. And Allison can touch on some thoughts on getting that group together a little bit more regularly here in just a minute. And yeah, I guess with that, I would, I did ask Allison to come to give you just a few brief updates from this past year in addition to where she sees this effort going in the coming year. So I'll turn it over to Alice.
One question before you get there. So are we having any challenges getting the money from the different, because there's a lot of entities paying in. Is the Forest Service paying when requested and counties and things?
No issues with the counties. So they've paid into this now two years based on the fiscal year. So they paid earlier this fiscal year when the fiscal year came around in July. We sent them an invoice. They've all paid that for the second time now. No issues or questions with that. Forest Service, since it's reimbursable, we went through the first year of Allison working on this first to show our match essentially. We've met with them a couple of different times in the last couple of months. I don't anticipate any issues. We've given them updates and kind of preloaded them with what we'd be submitting for reimbursement. So I expect that when I send that in today, their typical turnaround, since they do electronic payments, is usually a week. So I'm not anticipating any issues with that. And like I said, they did just add on to their agreement another year of funding, which we just completed that agreement.
When John Allen was on the steering committee, he came to the meeting. I know, is the new leadership going to be involved? Or do we have a designated person at the Forest Service that's going to be involved?
Yes, multiple people, both forest supervisors essentially. So Shane Jeffries from the OCHCO as well as Holly Jukes now replacing John Allen is actually now that she's signed the agreement modification to add those funds and is on board with this effort as well.
Okay, good. Thanks. All right. Welcome, Allison.
I wanted to make sure it was on. For the record, Allison Green, Coordinator for Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy. So quick note, I have actually met separately in person with Holly to give her kind of a roadmap on what we've been working on. I've actually known Holly for a number of years, so I'm excited to work with her in a different capacity. So she will be stepping into kind of that same representation role that John was providing. So as for kind of the meetings moving forward in the scope of work, we did make a change to clearly define that. Essentially, the scope of work in the past was, you know, regular meetings, having calendar challenges and a few other things. We essentially put quarterly meetings. Typically, they'll be call-in. Then on the agenda for the January meeting, we will have, you know, discussion of an in-person meeting, depending on what that, you know, how it works for everybody else. And then also for that scope of work, very clearly defined, there will be monthly updates and provided so that folks make sure they know exactly what's going on and what I've been up to. So a brief update on 2019, a few highlights. I know in the packet, there was a full program of work, what was completed in the year. A few things I was pretty excited about. We essentially, in partnership, Project Wildfire pulled off a live prescribed fire tour in May. And so we took that model and pulled off another one in October in partnership with Ben Park and Rec. So we had about 30 members of the public come out and actually walk with us as we were doing a live prescribed burn, which was pretty fantastic. It was probably 100 yards away from the closest built environment there at Chevelin Commons because it was taking place in Chevelin Park. We actually had a gentleman stop us afterwards and flat out tell us, you completely changed my perspective of prescribed fire, which was very exciting to see. We had both of the main news channels out, did interviews on site and grabbed some footage with them. And then working in both collaboratives and then with the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnership, which is down in Klamath and Lake Counties.
What's the other collaborative besides Deschutes County?
We have the OCHCO Restoration or Forest Restoration Collaborative. They're on the OCHCO National Forest. So I've been working with all three of those. Of course, Deschutes is where a lot of the energy is right now. They're going through a reapplication or a five-year extension for their CFLRP. So helping with some of the technical writing of that as well as.
Say what that is.
The Collaborative Forest.
Oh, the CSLRP?
Yep, the Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Project.
Okay, great. Because it really helps people that are watching know what you're saying.
I'm, I was going to say, I'm fighting off a chest cold, so I'm a little out of sorts, if you will. So I revert back to acronyms when all else fails.
Thanks, Allison.
So but with the, with the Deschutes Collaborative Forest, one piece that I've been very involved in is their Prescribed Fire and Wildland Fire Use Subcommittee. So working with them on mapping their connections so that they can be more successful in outreach and building those connections in the future. And the whole intent behind that is to then stand up a coalition of folks that are going to be hopefully our advocates for prescribed fire into the future as we increase pace and scale of prescribed fire on public land.
Real quick acknowledging that. So that's kind of Forest Service, federal government effort, making sure we have citizens that understand what's going on, and then trying to get citizens to be advocates for this activity. And we've always said, you know, two days of controlled smoke is so much better than a couple of weeks of uncontrolled wildfire smoke, especially closely and near the urban, wildland urban interface.
Well, and along those lines, too, is we just got our Community Response Plan approved. Like, we just got the keys to the car. We don't want to sell it back to the folks that just gave it to us. So really trying to ramp up those efforts of increasing community education around prescribed fire and smoke and making sure that we're still involved in the smoke collaborative and working with those folks. Another piece along with the Community Response Plan is we are working with a few folks with OSU Cascades and a few other folks that we know to find a facilitator to actually put together a couple of focus groups for essentially sensitive populations that would be sensitive to smoke impacts so that we can then gather some input. One of the biggest feedbacks in that Community Response Plan from the state was, you guys made this awesome education tool, which is centraloregofire.org. There's no feedback loops. So the idea came up to actually build some of those feedback loops in. So that'll hopefully be something in the spring of 2020 that we'll be able to put on the ground. We've been working on trying to get price quotes for folks that facilitate focus groups, which has ended up being a lot more difficult than I was expecting. If I Google, you know, focus group firms, all kinds of offers to be focus group participant, but not how to actually hire those firms. So we're trying to tap into our network to see who we can find. Other things in 2019 that we worked on, we have places in Central Washington that were interested in this model for the five-county effort and trying to design something similar. So I've been trying to share that model in some of our MOUs and some of our guiding documents so that they can then produce something similar up there. One of their takeaways from the strategic plan that they wrote back in 2018, I believe, was to make sure that they had regional efforts around fire-adapted communities. So they're going to then adopt our kind of regional model for the five-county model. They're in Washington. And then also working with Boise, Idaho, they have a really robust FireWise community network, but they want to start up something regional as well. So got to go up there in May. They actually were gracious enough to pay for travel. So we got to go up there without charging anything to the program and then giving a presentation on our model that then they could then adopt. And a few other things that are going on that will carry through till 2020, lots of conversations around biomass and biomass utilization. So working on creating a partnership between Red Rock Biofuels, which is down in Lakeview, and our local solid waste folks. Right now, we have kind of reached a point in the discussion where Red Rock is saying, hey, we don't want yard debris, but if there's parts of that yard debris they can utilize, we're trying to figure out what that sweet spot is to get some of that material to go down to Lakeview. Also had a great conversation with a company called Altree. They're looking at actually making products in Primeville. So building a plant in Primeville that then they would use small trees, branches, essentially melt them down and then create composite for road signs, building materials, things of that nature. So I've had a couple of meetings with them and I'm kind of staying in contact with them. They're wanting to put a plant in Oregon, and we're hoping that that's going to be Primeville. So that'll be something I'll just kind of keep my eye on as it progresses. And also working with Sustainable Northwest. So they are a Pacific Northwest group that works on biomass, also with juniper utilization. So making sure that partnership is clear and making sure that we are kind of open lines of communication so that we can then jump on those opportunities as they, as they come up to have biomass utilization here in Central Oregon. And then I think a couple of other, like the last couple of things is, again, working with the collaboratives, is looking at messaging around resilient landscapes for different user groups. So for folks that didn't see it, in September, the OCHCO National Forest had a close to 5,000 acre prescribed burn take place, which was really exciting for resilient landscape and landscape scale restoration. But they had a few user groups that were not super pumped, hunters being one of those groups. And so how can we customize some of those messaging around, you know, hunters, OHV folk, folks that horseback ride, other types of kind of those sections of recreation so that they can also be our advocates? We've done an awesome job of trail riders, trail runners, folks like that. That's a really small subsection of our recreationalists that are out in the woods. So how can we make advocates of those different sections of our recreation folks? And then finally, working with COCC, we've put together some classes that are based on assessing structure ignition potential classes that are put forth by NFPA. We essentially took the public domain research from US Forest Service, put it into a class, and then designed classes with the help of Ed Keith and Oregon Department of Forestry. And then COCC is giving us the rooms to do that. So essentially, we did two in September. We had 75 folks in total over the course of two days. We have some coming up in early January that are actually full, so 80 people total. And then we have some coming up in April. What's really exciting is that education is now getting places that it wasn't before. I was telling the Project Wildfire group, what I'm most excited for in January, I maybe only know 10% of the people. There are new people in that class. Like, we're not preaching to the choir anymore. And, you know, I've seen folks from the building community, landscape architects, real estate agents, folks like that going through the class in January. And it's pretty exciting to see.
What's the focus of the class?
Assessing Structure Ignition Potential. So it's drilling down to the home itself, its home ignition zone, and what essentially causes homes to ignite or not ignite during a wildland urban interface event. So both Commissioner Adair and DeMone were.
Was that in September?
That was in September, yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
You were there.
I know I was there. I was like, oh, that was September. I see.
That was. This year flew. It absolutely flew. Yes.
Yeah, no, it was excellent, actually. And I'm so glad to hear that you're, you know, you're expanding your network.
Well, that's, I mean, that's all, all to our partners. Like, it wouldn't be possible without COCC. 100% is, you know, we can have these one-hour, 20-minute, you know, here and there presentations, but we don't get to dig into it the same way that we do when we commit to a whole-day class. And kind of, go ahead.
So this is kind of connected to what I wanted to kind of say about the direction of the cohesive strategy effort, is that meanwhile, we're doing wildfire mapping and looking at the zoning and building codes. So I wonder how many of those, I mean, it's a real intense committee looking at, do we build houses differently? I mean, basically, in wild risk or wildfire risk areas. So I wonder if any of those people have signed up for the class or would want to. I mean, it's a real identifiable group that Nick and Peter and, we can tell you who they are, and that'd be good to get them in if you're really proceeding through what, because that's really a big topic. So I don't know if that connection's been made. But that's, to me, that's the kind of connection that cohesive strategies can have of overseeing the bigger projects that we're doing. And I'm sure you probably know about this, but I didn't know if you had connected with them.
Yes, actually. Zecharia Heck from CDD helped distribute that when the course was announced. So all those folks got early warning. I haven't seen the actual registration list, so I couldn't speak to whether they chose to sign up or not. But we shared that with them early on when the registration first came out through CDD.
Well, if they don't come to your class, maybe you could do a mini-class to them or something. I mean, since you're doing the work. But yeah, good, okay.
And I think the last thing coming up in 2020 that we're still working on, it's relatively new in the state, is working on our local definition of what shared stewardship is. So that essentially was throughout the state. It's a big term in cohesive strategy. It's kind of a new buzzword that a lot of folks don't necessarily know what it means. But both our federal partners and our state partners are getting guidance that you will work on this thing. And so we are working with kind of the regional partners at Region Six, Katie Lighthall at the Western Region, and along with the state forestry folks to figure out what that local definition of shared stewardship means. You know, in short, it's going to be a lot of cross-boundary work and prioritized work across boundaries and ownership is kind of what it's going to look like. But we don't know what that implementation will look like quite yet.
Questions or thoughts?
Well, I think, yeah, citizens are ready, ready for this knowledge, you know. And we do have a long history of thinking about living in those fire-adapted communities and wildfire-prone Central Oregon. So, yeah, this has taken it to the next level. Thank you for your efforts. And, you know, thank you, Jody, for running Project Wildfire for this last year or however long it's been, sorry. So, yeah, we've got the history of this. Let's take it to the next level. And this really does matter for everybody inside and outside the wildland urban interface areas, inside of a city or outside of a city.
Go ahead. Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Adair?
No, I went to say, after attending your class for the eight hours, I thought it was incredibly significant. And when I used to hear about people, you know, chipping and putting their bark down, to me, that was just like not the right thing to do. And I know I won't be replacing bark at my house because I know zero to five, you don't want to have anything like that. You want your bushes trimmed back. And I'm always pointing out to people how you need, we all need to think about it. And we just, because you never know where a fire will start. And if you're not home, it could be a really sad story. So thank you so much for that class.
One area that I would like to see is, I know when we were approving this new structure, it was really, one of the targets, I thought, was this issue of trying to get grant funds to do the kind of projects we've done historically in our area. Any progress on that or any ideas of new sources of funds for fire reduction work that has been so good in our county?
So that's a good question. As of right now, you know, kind of helping groups that are set up to get the funding has been my primary focus. So, you know, essentially helping the OCHCO National Forest put in their Joint Chiefs proposal so that they can work on both public and private lands. You know, essentially, the Deschutes Joint Chiefs Group, they decided to go with an OWEB grant, so a technical assistance grant to help educate landowners. So both those grant proposals are in.
They decided to go with that. Couldn't they have gone with both? I mean?
They could, they could have gone with both. There was some discussions about, there was a significant push down in South County for that Joint Chiefs funding. But we had some trouble kind of having some strategic educational pushes to get landowners on private lands on board. So we ended up having a couple of partners actually end up sending money back. Deschutes County luckily was not one of them. But it is one of those things where it was almost we had to take a couple steps backwards to move forward. I would have liked them to go with both, but only one voice on that group. And so working with Soil and Water Conservation District and a few other folks to bolster that education, which was really successful in Lake and Klamath Counties, to have folks understand what, you know, essentially who NRCS is, or Natural Resources Conservation Service, what their grant programs can do, and the reality of contracting, the reality of applying for those funds, and what that actually looks like. And so it was, it was an idea to take a step back and hopefully boost education to then boost better outcomes with grant funding on the ground, was the idea.
Well, that would be one area that if we can be of any help in encouraging the grant funding and things, we're happy to do, I think, as Commissioners. funding and, and things, we're happy to do, I think, as commissioners, because we're, I think that was one of the things we talked about a lot in terms of why this cohesive strategy makes sense as, as a five-county area, but also just as a way to reach out for funding that we don't have otherwise, that aren't really the traditional, so, good.
So yeah, just, uh, an advocate for, uh, industry, you know, small diameter logs, uh, you know, the, the trees are healthiest when there's a little bit of spacing between them. And we got to a point in the last generation where we weren't touching the forest and, you know, we see it in Sun River and around that area where we wanted to save every tree, but it then all the trees don't, are not healthy. So, uh, you know, advocating in private industry for small diameter utilization, chips themselves and other uses of biomass. And there's a lot of people working on that problem too. So, uh, you know, keep us informed what we can do to advocate or to support, or just get the, uh, community to understand what's going on, on out there. And that's exactly what this effort is, so, thank you.
So I guess, um, seek a-
I move, um, that we have, uh, consideration of administrator's signature of document number 2019-839, the cohesive strategy coordinator contract.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Chair of the House, yes. Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
Thanks, Allison.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. We've got three items. We're going to try to finish by about 10:15 or 10:20. This is the, um, land donation agreement with the City of Redmond.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you.
For, uh, our pilot project, um, that the, Redmond's doing and we've added a couple of new, uh, sentences, I guess, in the reversion clause. So we don't need to, we, we've been through it, so we don't need to necessarily go through all of it.
So I was gonna just hit some high points, and again, it is, um, formerly, uh, James Lewis Property Manager for Deschutes County and it's document number 2019-847. Um, and again, it's a donation agreement, um, it's for the 40 acres, uh, that lies adjacent to the Redmond city limits, UGB, on the east side. Um, in the agreement itself, it memorializes that Redmond will be, um, conducting the, the work under the pilot project, um, on House Bill 4079 and 2336. Um, but the agreement itself, um, the main points of the agreement are particularly Exhibits B and Exhibit C. Exhibit B is the schedule of tasks and associated timelines, and that, um, puts the, uh, onus on Redmond over the next two years to do all of the work necessary to partition the property so it can be formally deeded to them. And then subsequently, get the land use entitlements for a master plan, uh, approval that will allow them to develop over 500 units, 50% of which will be affordable housing, to, um, uh, work with a master developer. And then subsequently, get toward construction beginning, uh, in the spring of 2023. So essentially, it'll take three years to get through this whole land use planning, um, and, uh, master planning process. So, uh, with that, two other provisions, and then I'll conclude my remarks, are the right of reversion, uh, the elective right of reversion and right of reversion. So essentially, uh, with that list of tasks and timelines, it, um, and that Redmond put together, the elective right of reversion requires them to spend a million dollars toward development and construction, um, within the initial seven years after they acquire the property. Um, if they do not do that, Deschutes County has the ability to, um, to reacquire the property from the City of Redmond. And that's important because it keeps them on task and makes sure the project goes forward. Uh, and then the right of reversion is that if for some reason they just completely, um, the project goes awry for any reason, the county has the ability to acquire the, the property back, any unsold portion of the property. So that's kind of the, the highlights and the overview. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Has, has Redmond signed this? Did they sign it last night?
Yes, it's my understanding was, uh, I, I don't know that they signed it, but it was on their council's agenda last night, so I'm assuming they signed it.
Well, just a couple of comments. Real happy to be working with Redmond. I know they're going to put a lot of effort into this. Uh, just reading through the, the scope of it and what they have to meet, it's, it's a pretty big challenge to, uh, do the, the affordable part at the same time as the market rate. And then I'm really glad they'll have the, I guess, I assume that we'll get, be able to get the same information that LCDC gets with regard to how they're doing on the project, their annual reporting. It's going to be very interesting, but we want to wish them the best, uh, success and if we can help more, that's great. But I'm really happy about this.
Well, a couple of weeks ago, this was their number one priority, get clear, you know, piece of paper that says they have the access to the land and that ownership. So this is that document that really does, uh, move this whole project forward. Uh, it's a big, uh, state legislative effort. Uh, you know, I hopefully, and I do support that there'll be other, uh, urban growth expansion and development around Redmond too. So hopefully it just doesn't perturb the private developers too much.
Commissioner Dare?
It's, what, 485 homes, apartment, including apartments, and it's critical for the housing shortage. And I, if anyone can do this efficiently, I believe that Redmond can. You see what they've done with their community, the diversify, you know, diversification, all the manufacturing they've brought into Redmond. So this is just going to, you know, go partner with that and definitely, I'm really happy that we're doing it. And I'm also hoping that they put in a greenhouse. So those people can have like a garden there because it's, you know, it's only 40 acres and that's, you know, that's a lot of people on those 40 acres. So that was one thing I'd mentioned at their meeting.
Good.
And I know Chris Hannah is all for that.
Tom, did you want to say anything or?
Uh, no, Commissioners, I'm, you know, we will continue to work closely with Redmond's staff, uh, to monitor progress. I imagine, you know, as you know, we, we have, uh, two or three, uh, joint meetings a year with the city, uh, council up there. And I, I would imagine this is going to be a regular agenda item, uh, on those meetings for them to provide updates to all of you on, uh, their progress and moving it forward. James is on their, uh, advisory committee, uh, so he'll be checking in with them and getting regular reports and, and contributing to the discussion on, on how this is moving forward. So I'm, yeah, from a staff perspective, we're all in and we'll, we'll, uh, continue to do our best to help it along.
Dave, any comments on the contract?
No, we've worked with it, uh, with James and the city and comfortable with it.
And the reversion's really a fallback if, kind of if, you know, there's some kind of colossal, you know, inability to do it, but we're hoping that doesn't come, so, okay. Let's get a, let's seek a motions for a board signature document.
With that, yeah, I'll move board signature document number 2019-847, land donation agreement with the City of Redmond.
No, second it.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thanks, James, for working this through. Thanks, Dave, for negotiating on it. All right, our next item on the agenda is the, um, oh, uh, the tech, Land Conservation Development, uh, Department Technical Assistance Grant Award. So we're going to get an update on, we all, I, I put this on the agenda just to hear kind of, I mean, it's written up pretty well what we got, but just kind of hear what you learned in the process. I think we were optimistic we'd get, we'd get a grant from LCDC, but it wasn't, you know, for sure, and I, anyway.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Saltzman, excuse me, uh, Associate Planner. So yeah, this is just a, a brief check-in. I want to be aware of your time. I know it's a big agenda today. Um, as you might recall, uh, at the end of September, uh, Zechariah Heck, uh, my colleague, put together a large grant proposal for the DLCD Technical Assistance Grant Award to address four different, uh, tasks that ultimately would get us a little bit more towards, um, working towards the comprehensive plan. And, um, we've received notice that we have received, uh, $25,000 in a technical assistance grant, and that addresses two of the four items that were, um, in the application. I do have copies of the application in case anybody would like, uh, like that, just let me know.
I think we have.
You have them, okay, good. Uh, and those are $10,000 to incorporate wildfire mitigation advisory committee recommendations into the comprehensive plan and development code. And then the second is to begin updating the Goal Five Wildlife Habitat inventories, and that would be for $15,000. And those go with some in-kind, uh, contributions as well. Um, just a little bit of background, there's many, many facets of a comprehensive plan. There's a bunch of, uh, excuse me, projects on the first page of the memorandum provided that just show, uh, some of them, some of which are in progress right now, some are kind of in the pipeline. Of those, uh, we selected four to kind of put in this grant. Um, those things need additional attention. It could benefit from either consultant or additional funding in some sort of, uh, fashion. Uh, those were to do housing, uh, Housing Strategies Report, Terrebonne Sewer Feasibility Study, Updating the Wildlife Inventories, and Wildfire Mitigation Advisory Committee. So all of these things ultimately will be knit together to be able to move forward in a comprehensive plan sometime in the future. Um, some of it is a combination of data collection, a little bit of public outreach, um, working with ODF and W to kind of, uh, figure out a strategy for, uh, analyzing existing data about wildlife. Um, it's a whole host of, of tasks that will get us poised to be able to knit these things together to then go forward to work on a comprehensive plan, because obviously all of these things are interrelated. You can't look at housing without looking at wildlife, without looking at wildfire, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to kind of move forward with these, whatever tasks we can, um, with whatever assistance has been provided and with the ultimate goal of, of, uh, forming recommendations for the comprehensive plan. So we look to, um, we will reach out to ODF and W and I believe, uh, Goal Five, a DLCD Goal Five Coordinator to, uh, finesse the scope of work, um, which we'd then go back to the board in January to discuss that in more detail in terms of the 18-month plan. Um, so this is just meant as a check-in to, um, let you know where we are and what our plans are and see if you have any questions or issues with us moving forward.
One question I have is, um, so they allocate the, the money and, and amounts that they say, and we're to match them, but where does the money go? Is it to pay a specific staff person or, um, do they bring in staff people or?
I believe it's a combination of things. So we do have some consultants, uh, work envisioned for, um, particularly the Goal Five and the wildlife, um, and I believe some of it, it goes to that.
Are you, are, do they tell you or do you, or was it part of your application?
It was part of the application. It did, it did parse it out a little bit, but I think there is some flexibility, um, from what we've learned from DLCD in terms of how we allocate it.
Exactly. Nick Leelak, Deschutes County Community Development Director, for the record. A Commissioner will, um, begin to identify exactly where the resources are going to be expended as we go through the scoping process and we develop our scope of work with the Board of Commissioners. But, um, none of the money will go, would, would, uh, go back to DLCD to pay for any of their staffing resources. The question would be, would it be to offset some of our staffing resources, um, and/or would we hire consultants for specific parts of these two projects?
Well, we're probably going to, and, I mean, we have overhead and, and ongoing expenses and, uh, other costs as we do these projects. So this is just a kind of a, uh, an amount to set direction to these two efforts from the state's point of view is the way I see this.
And I remember that it wasn't really looking like we were actually going to get the grant funding, but we took the risk. So, um, I want to thank, what, Zechariah for writing the, the proposal. He was successful and, you know, it's work that needs to be done. So I'm really happy that we're going to have some support financially from someone else.
I, I would just offer that, that the day we received the, uh, letter awarding the grant or notifying us that we were going to award the grant, I, uh, thanked DLCD immediately for, for the grant award, and they replied, um, just as promptly stating that they recognized Deschutes County as really a leader in planning in the state of Oregon. It was one of the deciding factors, which is very encouraging.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. Well, thanks for getting this done and applying for it, and two out of four is not bad and-
Well, and I was going to say, on the, uh, you know, the bulleted list of, of items that, uh, included that weren't really selected for the applicat-, we're going to do all those anyways, you know, I mean, everything's happening.
Exactly. Okay, I, I don't know that we, this was just an update, so we don't need to pass any motions, but thanks for joining us today and explaining that. We look forward to hearing more about it. So, thank you.
Thank you for this point.
Okay, our next item this morning is a public hearing on the consideration of signature of board number, order number 2019-9, or 048, assigning the name Narv Lane to a public road. And Peter Russell's going to lead us, um, we have a hearing on this at this point.
Okay, up with the podium here.
Am I supposed to have a script?
Um, I'll get to that in just a second. I've convinced this mouse to actually do it.
I'm used to having a script.
Sharon, why does the mouse not work?
Maybe it doesn't like you, Peter.
There's a magic button. There's a magic button?
Yeah.
Now it should work.
Oh, look at that.
There's a magic-
You want to do the PowerPoint too?
Literally, it's just a button that suddenly makes-
The big red one that says, push this button.
Yeah, you know, if you like this thing, do the presentation. All right, thanks, Tanya. All right.
But we're on schedule.
Well, we might be on schedule.
We're ahead of schedule, except for Peter.
Greetings, Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner for Deschutes County. Um, so, in answer to your question, Commissioner, we don't follow exactly the land use hearing process, because this is Title 16, it's not Title 17 or 18. So it is a public hearing, but you don't have to go through the disclosure or qual-, you know, does anyone care to challenge it like that? But then you just kind of run the meeting as normal. Um, so you don't have to have that part in it unless Dave wants to correct me because I'm wrong, but, okay.
You're correct.
Just stating that it's a public hearing.
Yeah, I understand, it's just a public hearing, so. Um, and what we're here for is, uh, board consideration to sign Order 2019-048, which would assign the name approved in File 24719-00574RN, which would be Narv Lane for a public right-of-way. Uh, so the way we'll do the hearings process is that, um, we'll have, uh, the board chair will open the hearing, staff will give the, a presentation. Uh, I know you have a jammed agenda, so I have, I think, maybe six slides, so it's not very long. Uh, then you'll-
We're really, we're actually 15 minutes ahead of time, so we're, this is our last item this morning, so you're good.
So I will speak more slowly.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, so, uh, comments by the applicant or parties affected by the address. Again, it's a little different from land use. We send notice to people who either own or rent property on the affected road. Uh, we have, uh, the applicant here. The board decides then typically whether to continue or close the hearing, and then the board decides whether to approve the order signing the road name. So Deschutes County Code 1616, which is our road naming code, that applies to this particular application. Heidi Narver, who's here today, applied for the road name. Um, she's an adjacent property owner, so legally she can do this. The 30-foot wide public road was dedicated to the county. Part of the, uh, steps we go through in Title 1616 is determine the legal status of the road, so this was a legal road. Um, we sent out notice to those who, uh, joined the affected roadway. We received no public comment, uh, on it. We, uh, reviewed the application and then, uh, with the property address coordinator, who's Tracy Griffin, and there were several proposed names. Um, one, uh, we couldn't use Narv Road because under our county code, if it's less than 60 feet wide, it has to be a lane or a terrace, so we went with Narv Lane. Then we held a work session with the board on December 9th, over, went over the pros and cons of, of the particular road name and what you'd get from an online search versus what you'd get from a, uh, hardcover dictionary, um, discussed that matter with the board. And then where we are, um, I couldn't get this getting bigger, but basically Walker Road, right where it makes that 90-degree bend to go to the north, that's where this public roadway comes south of it. Uh, it appears on the east edge of Tax Lot 171434AA, Tax Lot 100, which is the east edge of this property. Again, it's a 30-foot wide public road that was accepted into the county, uh, road system in January 3rd, 2007. This yellow highlighted area is Ms. Narv's, Ms. Narver's property. Um, her concerns were safety using Walker Road as access to the property, uh, so she would prefer to use the public road on the east side of her property. Well, in order to do that and get a driveway permit, you need to have, uh, the road be named. Also, uh, Deschutes County, our road naming system, it's set up for public safety and emergency responders, so if she's physically accessing on the east side of her property, you want to make sure that it has a distinct name so they'll know how to get to, uh, that property should they need to for fire and life safety services reasons. Um, among her suggested names, Narv is a family nickname and honors her late brother, so that's why she chose that.
One question, Peter, that when you say access from the east side, so is that at that looping road at the, kind of the bottom, that that would become the access from over there into the straight road? Is that the-
So, yeah, so you can see it better when this diagram here. So you see that thin red box? That's actually the public roadway. So you come south from Walker and then she'd work with the road department to see where the physical access would occur on the, on that, from that red box onto the property.
I think that curved road is BLM.
Yeah.
Public lane.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that. So what you can see on the, there's the alfalfa transfer station, that's kind of that gray gravelly area, and then where the light-colored dirt road curves, that's the BLM access to Reynolds Pond, as Commissioner DeBonne mentioned. So really, that's all I have, unless the Board has any questions of staff, at which point I will step out of the way and you can open the hearing. I'll put this back up just in case you want to see where the road is.
Peter, before we open the hearing?
Okay, thank you.
So I'll open the hearing on the naming of Narv Lane. The public road has been described by Peter Russell. I guess you must be the proponent of this, so if you'd like to come up and say anything you can now is the time. I don't know if you have to, does she need to fill out a form, the blue form? And we can do that afterwards, too. I mean, she can, you can come up and speak and then we just turn that into Sharon after, but if you want to join us here, yeah, sit there and, or, you can, you can sit at the table if you want. Yeah, that's great. Just introduce yourself for the record and then just-
I'm Heidi Narver, the property owner, and Narv Lane is, yeah, a family nickname, like he said, and my brother, my older brother passed away and it was definitely like his nickname. And just to kind of honor him and thought it'd be fun to have a name, a road name. I've never got to name a road.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't do it too often either.
Yeah.
I had one question and I don't know if you know the answer. So it says, I think Peter said that it's been a public road since 2007 or something. So why, why doesn't it get named when it becomes a public road or what's the, just curious, I don't know enough about the process.
Because at that time, no property was taking access from it. The, this property that Ms. Narver owns was split off from the larger property to the west and that property was taking its access off Walker Road. So if there were a subdivision, we would have named it at the time, but the county has a fair number of local access roads and public roads that are unnamed. Under our code, if it provides access to three more tax lots, we have to name them. Typically, that doesn't happen until it's brought to our attention, to be honest, or if a property owner wants it to be named. So there was no reason to name it because nobody was really using it to get to the property.
Commissioners, I would add, I think that, you know, there's public safety reasons for the road naming also, so the public safety, police, fire have a clearer path to find a property by accessing off a named road as opposed to the, sort of the parent road, if you will, in this case, Walker to the north.
The road at the corner of Walker Road where it turns north and you're calling it that, yeah.
So I have a question, how soon will this show up on Google Maps? Because my street doesn't even show up when I'm driving to my house and it's over a mile long and it always wants us to turn right on Goodrich Place and it does that for the FedEx, you know, all the directions. So how, yeah, how soon will Heidi expect this to show up?
So I can't speak for Google, but, but for the county, we send notice to our road department, send notice to 911, we send notice to the property assessors, and so they go through their, you know, timelines to get it on the county road. So I can't give you the exact time date, but it's in process, they're aware of it. I know that 911 had called earlier and said, hey, can we start using this? And we're like, well, no, because yes, we have a staff decision, but the Board has to formally assign the road. So once I get back and depending on what your decision is, we'll work with the property address coordinator and then also inform the road department. Then the road department, you know, they have to make a sign. It's the property owner who has to help fund the construction of putting up the signs, so the road department has a fee for that. So there's some steps to come, you know, subsequent, but when Google updates their software, I don't know. I can see if I can find out, but I can't tell you how soon it's gonna pop up in Google.
No, I mean, I was just wondering, like, okay, so what, are you building a home there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if you're at your home and you call 911, will they just know because of the location on their phone where to go?
They, they could do that, but also, again, they've, they update much more frequently than Google because obviously there's life safety issues with 911. So, excuse me, we work with Evan, I believe is the gentleman's name at 911. So as soon as we get this done, we get it to Evan and then Evan works his end to get into the database.
Okay.
I think, yeah, there's the map layers for Deschutes County at our assessor's office. There's, you know, layers there and then 911, public safety. So the local will be put in place before, yeah, commercial industry is what Google is, you know, they, whenever they pick it up, they'll pick it up, but it'll be in our local records.
I mean, my address has been a mess forever. You know, it's very strange, so I just wondered, it's, that's not a local issue, though?
Like, it's, if it's in dial, that would be the local-
Well, Google might have a system, we could investigate that.
Yeah, so I'm saying, there's, there's a bridge there.
Send to somebody an update and they add it? I don't know, that'd be, Peter can find that out. I don't know how you call Google, but they can call us. I'm, they know where you are.
They love Google it.
I'm not sure.
Just Google it.
Yeah, yeah. How to Google, yeah, yeah, well, that'd be interesting, you may actually find-
Let, let me know, please.
In our neighborhood, too, there was, somehow they made a connection to a road that wasn't really there and, yeah, people would be routed all around South County to try to get to our neighborhoods. We've seen that before.
I know, it's just, yeah, it's-
That's a commercial product opposed to our official records.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad our record is adequate.
Well, just for the order, so any other comments or?
No.
Thank you for coming today.
So real quick question, so you were involved in that dedication process also? The 30-foot right-of-way previously?
So, oh, with the road or?
That was the earlier property owner did that as part of it and there was a lot line adjustment, so I don't believe Ms. Narver was involved with those land use applications.
And then is it a process that you found that you needed to have it named so you could get your driveway on that road instead of off of Walker Road?
Mm-hmm.
So it was just kind of, you were guided to this process to get this driveway, driveway access, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting. Well, thanks for joining us today. I'm gonna, if you'll fill that out real quick, we'll get, I just make a call for any other testimony, it doesn't look like anyone else is here to do that, so I think we could close the, close the hearing and what's the will of the commission? Would you like to go ahead and vote on this today? There's an ordinance drawn, or an order drawn up here, we could, can we approve this into a first reading or is this a first reading thing?
It's just a single reading.
Okay. Okay. So, you want to-
I move we approve order assigning the name of Narv Lane to a public road extending approximately 1,125 feet south of Walker Road. It's order number 2019-048.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any further comments?
So, yeah, seeing no community opposition, I'll be in support of this.
Okay.
It's just funny, you're all by yourself.
Nice to meet you, Heidi.
You get to name your own road.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, so Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Congratulations.
So thank you, congratulations. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
And if you can just, yeah, turn that into Sharon so we have it for the record.
I, um, do I need, I don't think I have to.
Peter can help you with that. So I think that ends our, what we had on the agenda this morning, we're actually a little bit early. So did you want to, was anybody want to update on anything? Do some meeting updates for 15 minutes or whatever? Are we gonna ride together to the county, take the county rig? Okay, I put enough gas in it to get there and back, that's all. I about ran out.
Well, that would look really good.
Yeah, Commissioner's stranded along. Well, we could call the sheriff and they could take us, but-
So we could acknowledge that our meeting did start an hour early today. If there was anybody here for public testimony?
Oh.
Just in case.
Yes, it did start at nine today.
Yeah, I suppose that's true.
Well, let's see, I was at the Health Council meeting.
Okay.
See, what was last week? I was at the Health Council meeting on, oh, after our budget meeting on Thursday and they had a presentation from Traces, which had received a significant amount of funding prior. And so they have three applicants for the funding, I believe it's like 1.3 million. It's between our Stabilization Center, Thrive, and Traces. So that decision, that vote will occur in January, the allocation of that funding. And, yeah, on Monday morning, I was met with Brandy Schoyer and Holly and Michael and Michael from the Sheriff's Office regarding Gilson Schultz, regarding the funding we're doing through the Criminal Justice Department. And that grant, which they have $10 million for, they haven't released the parameters of the application, but we are working on it in advance so that we're ready to go. We're hoping that we'll know what the number is as far as what we need to apply for to help stabilization and help with the justice system. So that was Monday. And then yesterday at ODOT, Wayne Fordin spoke on behalf of our region, the entire state was there, and the issues that ODOT has regarding just like that project in Portland, it's, they had all kinds of testimony on both sides for it.
The Rose Quarter?
Right.
Was that during a public comment?
Yeah, it was public comment. And, you know, people are saying, no, don't do it at all because the world's gonna end in 10 years. And then you had the-
That's a good reason.
Then you had the other side, you had a minority contractors that were speaking on how they would like to keep some of those jobs in the community. So it was, it was a pretty good balance and, you know, and then I did, I was sitting and talking with Gary regarding our, this afternoon, what we're doing. So that was yesterday.
Was there a particular, I know we'd gotten invitations, but a particular goal we had in going to that meeting or?
I wanted to find out how their decision-making is, and they actually had gotten a letter from the governor, I believe on Monday, and the letter from the governor said, hold off, don't do anything on Rose Quarter for some reasons, which they, they didn't really share, but she said, you've got to hold off on this. And so they were being respectful of what she said and, you know, just to see the dynamics and we do have someone, Commissioner Smith is a new appointee on the commission, so I did talk to her because she had called me.
Where's she from?
Ben.
Sharon. Oh, Sharon Smith, yeah.
Yes, Sharon Smith, Commissioner Smith. And so she's on the commission and I had had dinner in Sun River with all the other commissioners at their table, I think that was in November. So it was good seeing some of them and the cross-section of the room, there were quite a few people that had complaints with ODOT and they actually made them in public comments. So, you know, they, they're trying to get to the bottom of this, you know, bundogal in Portland and that was, as Gary said, a bigger problem than we had.
Yeah, well, it's huge. Yeah, I was, it, getting out of there, even the convention center Monday, somebody let me in so I could get over to get on an 84, but if they, I mean, it's backed up at 3:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it's just all backed up. And I was listening to the road reports as I was leaving town Saturday, or Monday and, you know, the, going from there to the I-5 was 30 minutes, which is probably a 10-minute drive or less, but it was, yeah, really interesting.
No, I just think that the ODOT meeting, and I did talk to a lot of people in the room in the, when it was over, and it was, we, they had a great representation from throughout the state. So I just, I just felt like it was important because, you know, as I say, I don't feel like Deschutes County is getting their fair share.
Yeah.
We are not getting our fair share and I feel like we really need to, I went up, you know-
Maybe that'd be a good thing for us to go and make public comments.
Right, right.
I feel that the-
Take turns go every time.
Five billion dollars, we're not getting our 5% of that or 7%, which-
No, we're not.
-would be more accurate of what we should get. So why is that and how do we get it? So that was good. The, just on transportation, the governor spoke at the Leadership Summit Monday. She was asked about the, the new bridge across to Washington and was optimistic that this, she's, they're getting ready to propose it again and they're optimistic that it'll get done because new governor in Washington, Washingtonians know the value of it as well as Oregonians. There weren't a better economy than we were in 2013, so they, she brought that up, she, she wasn't excited about talking about it, but she did, she did talk about it and it was, that was kind of interesting.
They did have someone from Washington State talking about the bridge.
Yeah, good.
At this meeting.
Yeah.
That they actually know about it this time.
Yeah.
So he said, I don't want to mention the Columbia River Crossing, so, yeah.
Any comments about our, our Monday meeting?
Oh, yeah, so real quick, thinking back, so Saturday, we were all at the ribbon cutting for Habitat Humanity in Southern Deschutes County in the pine, so that was a real exciting, real positive event. Three people getting home, home, keys handed to them for homeownership, so that was real positive for the area and the plans for the next triplex and a couple other units in that area. So we can all celebrate that we were partners in that. But, yeah, so the Oregon Business Plan Leadership Summit, I think there was about 1,100 people there, I heard from someone, you know, a lot of folks from all around the state. You can just see kind of the, the density driving the decision-making process, you know, Representative Lynn Finley from Eastern Oregon talking about how the statewide land use really just kind of puts a throttle on some of the development in their rural Malheur County and right across the river on the other side in Idaho, they're, you know, building five or six times more houses in a county that's parallel to them. So I think it was mentioned that when the onion sheds all collapsed in a big snowstorm years ago, redevelopment's happening on the other side of the river. So that's the decisions of the leadership and that's the realities of what's going on out there. Obviously, Deschutes County, you know, we're just in that kind of big middle ground, we're a big player, being generally a smaller county, but everybody knows Deschutes County.
So, yeah, I'll make a couple comments about it, too. I thought it was fairly interesting, it was, is, there was, it's a lot of business leaders and a lot of political leaders and a lot of discussion about issues. I mean, it was really pretty intense, going from fire stuff to, to transportation things to education, et cetera. I'm concerned with, most of the plans involve spending more money, which, you know, I'm not quite sure where that's all gonna come from, whether, but anyway, there was some really good speakers, it was, it was really kind of focused on rural versus urban and how do we get, you know, improve that divide and some of the, Peter Courtney, the, Peter, the Senate was interesting about some of those views. But I thought it was, it was worth going to and, you know, the governor spoke, the leaders of the House and Senate, other entities, heads of big corporations like PGE, PP&amp;L, et cetera, and kind of interesting to hear their, their philosophy and about it, but-
And the big picture was, the theme was the long game and the idea was, you know, what does a 10-year vision look like for business and leadership in the state? And it was also connected to next year, you know, so that, this, this was the first time that I was at an event starting thinking about the, the next decade, you know, and a week or two we're saying goodbye to the 19 and going into 20. So this is the first time I sat at something thinking, okay, yeah, what is the next 10 years like?
They kept referring to it as the end of a decade, so that was interesting.
Well, it's fascinating because every morning I'm watching the top states in the nation and Illinois was fifth top for business, Nevada was third, uh, fourth, and today it was North Dakota. And you look at what that category tax is going to do to the state of Oregon, businesses are gonna, like, if they were thinking about coming here, they're going to circle around and I believe the tax, the top tax was like 2.9% in North Dakota. Actually, there's going, the Eastern Oregon Summit that was in Hermiston, it's gonna be in Hermiston again this year, it's gonna, or next year, it's gonna be July 23rd and 24th, and they are really wanting to really promote this because we do have more rural emphasis with that summit and they'll eventually, they want to move it down to Deschutes County at some time. They want to, like, circle it around. So I've been working with Bobby Levy on that and it's, you know, they've got a great venue having it at Hermiston High School and it seems like a great group and Phil's on that team, Phil Shores. Yeah, so he's, he's been really promoting that, so hopefully that'll go, but I think we'll have maybe more of an Eastern Oregon influence and they're gonna do a tour on the 23rd, but they're gonna give you options on where you want to go. Do you want to go see water? Do you want to see the forest or do you want to see agriculture? And they're gonna work the region from those points of view.
Well, you know, and I, that kind of just brings to mind our efforts in Central Oregon with EDCO and diversifying the economy, you know, I mean, we have an example of a place that we have brought in, you know, high-tech manufacturing, biotechnology, diversifying the economy, startup environment, you know, and that's all here in the tri-county area. So, yeah, we could do that, a lot more for the eastern side of the state, too.
Well, yeah, and that was another, actually, I forgot to mention, that one of the fascinating parts of the conference was some speakers about business advances and one was about 3D printing and how remarkable that is. And Hewlett-Packard and Corvallis was really the, I guess, the starter of that, but they had other discussions about making things, and he's put on a presentation of things that can be made with these 3D printers of all different materials. It was very fascinating and they had a lot of discussion about other business things, but it, it does, some of it, I don't know how much of it goes, or some of it, I'm not sure goes on here as much, but-
Well, did you guys see the special on KAWAK, you know, that do the inserts for the Chinook helicopters for LA County Fire, that all those inserts are made here, they're either 1,000 or 30, you remember on our tour, the 3,500 gallon? And I just saw that on the news- And I just saw that on the news the other day. I'm not sure if it was when I was in LA or here, but it's like, they are, it's an amazing, you know, diversification here.
When I was explaining that to somebody, the fact that it's a lot different than dipping a bucket and having that big swinging bucket underneath you, because they're pulling the water up, having it in the center of their helicopter, and then dropping it very precisely.
I mean, they can pull it up in like a minute.
Yeah.
It's incredible technology, so.
One other meeting I wanted to update, I went to the nine, nine-one-one meeting yesterday, uh, just got an update. I hadn't been in the November meeting, I'm not sure.
So you were able to, yeah.
Yeah, I was able to go to that. And, um, they're moving forward with their CAD program, and they're programming all the monitors, and they're kind of halfway through that. So that was interesting. Their, uh, rollout of the, that's, I think occurs in the spring, which is when the new schedule was. They've gotten some more bids coming in for the tower and over turf, better bids. Apparently this round, there's been a lot more interest by contractors, and, and I think that's kind of typical of contracting, that they hit a better time. And so waiting to do that is a good idea. And one, one contractor even came up with a new approach to it, so that was positive. Let me think of anything else that was kind of highlights there.
Trotz here working on,
Yeah, Trotz back.
Overall system assessment, uh, when we look at simulcast, different sort of system-wide improvements that, um, may be a good idea.
Yeah, that's great that we brought them back. I, I mean, it seemed like they did such a great job before, so. They're the consultants from Texas, I think, yeah. Looked help us with before with the,
Yeah, so I was at my desk, and I sent Sarah Crossway a note saying I'm going to be coming back from Portland, so I won't be able to attend the meeting. And then five minutes later, I'm like, oh, well, let me just send a note to everybody if, if you're,
Oh, it's great, yeah, it was good.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I came home, uh, Monday night, so I could go to that.
So is, is Will, um, taking part, is, is his, our services?
Well, he's a consultant for us, but in, he didn't happen to call in yesterday. He was on the agenda, but they were able to cover his topics. But I guess he's still working for us somewhat, and they've hired another techno, technical person for the radios, Nick Bittler or something, but.
Uh, yeah, Nick Bittler, uh, is a technician level, not, not a replacement for Will, but he's got lots of experience with the Harrison system. So, yeah, he was, uh, he was thrown right into the midst of, uh, work there, and, uh, well, it doesn't require a lot of training.
Okay. Oh, the other, well, I might as well, yeah, we got a couple more minutes. What you got under the, yeah, you have a question?
Not on nine-one-one, if we have time, just a couple.
Um, so yesterday, we had an additional meeting on the Vet Village concept with the small homes or kind of dwelling units with a central, uh, bathroom, shower and kitchen facilities. And it's, um, Representative Helt, they called the meeting, and turned out both Commissioner DeBonne and I ended up there from different people. So, um, I had had a meeting earlier about that property out by the sheriff's office, uh, or about really next to nine-one-one. And, and we're going to pursue that and see what the possibility is for that. That's kind of our commissioners, that's what they're requesting of us. So, um, this would be a good time to talk about any ideas you have, or. I'd like to pursue that and see what obstacles there are in terms of neighbors, uh, the state police. I think it'd be nice if they liked the idea. I know one of the things, oh, I was going to, I heard yesterday at the opening of the, uh, warming shelter was from the sheriff's department is the people using the warming shelters will be people they know. That will be somewhat true also for the, this veterans' village, I would think. So that, I think the sheriff's supportive of the idea, so it's kind of a matter of how, you know, can we implement it, et cetera.
So, yeah, we ended up at the same, uh, meeting with invitation from Representative Helt, so.
She apologized.
Well, yeah, at one point I just left, so, yeah, because that was the idea.
We heard the information.
Didn't deliberate or lay, yeah.
No, she told me last night, to be sure, and told Commissioner DeBonne that she was very sorry.
Oh, I was able to get my renewal of my driver's license, so it's a eight-year, eight-year license, and next week or whatever is going to be the time it expires. So I was able to get it yesterday.
Well, and it takes all of us, and I said, well, we'll come back and work on it.
For this topic.
But we need to do it in this setting. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is, uh, the opening yesterday of the warming shelter really went well. I gave credit, you know, I said that all the commissioners have been very supportive of this. We can do whatever we can to help, but really, uh, the sheriff's office and Neighbor Impact have really stepped up. Neighbor Impact has eighteen people trained already to work in there. And Sheriff's Office was very excited about their ability to, they just put a door between the, the two units on one side and the other two, and we'll see how it goes, but really excited about that project, so.
And hopefully we can set direction to a, either a more permanent place or a system of how do we select it annually also? You know, I'm referring to if it moves, because this was the, this is how it started, was a, you know, church opening its doors on the coldest nights of the year. So, um, yeah, we'll figure out what the future looks like.
Yeah, just a couple procedural questions. I sent you all a note that, uh, Mr. Henderson and I received from the Oregon Geographic Names Board. Um, they want to name, uh, some springs up at the head of Tumlo Creek. So just whether you want that on an agenda, if you want to invite the city, or you just delegate the naming, if you have a chance to read us, or just how exactly you'd like to deal with that.
Okay.
I can put it on.
What does the decision look like from a board of commissioners?
They're just asking for input from the county.
Okay, on the name of that's?
The naming of that springs after a long-term, you know, city, uh, water department employee. So it's just, do you like it? Do you not like it? Are you neutral? It's just a real simple, it's not a formal action.
Look at that this afternoon, if we have time, or on Monday.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to put it on the, on the agenda for Monday, the, the discussion, just whether you want it how, just amongst yourselves, if you, or if you'd like me to invite someone from the city to give you the background.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, let's invite an advocate for it, and I'll put it on a map, so we know what we're talking about.
Happy to do that. The other one, even quicker, our contract with, uh, Central Oregon Visitors Association, um, calls out a mid-year report, uh, which would typically be done in January. So, uh, we've done them, not done them in the past, just what your interest level is in having Julia come in.
I want a report.
Okay, all right.
I want to know exactly where we are.
Put it on a future agenda, thank you.
Good. All right, with that, I think we'll recess for this morning. Uh, we'll be back at two o'clock to deliberate and, um, so, sounds good.
We're coming back down here.
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to reconvene the, uh, December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. We had taken, we had taken a recess this morning, so, uh, we could go. We all three went to the graduation from the Oregon Youth Challenge, which was, uh, really a remarkable event. If you haven't been to it, it's, um, really inspiring. They gave great, the, these are kids from all over the state of Oregon that have had trouble in high school, and this gets them back on track. And there is their biggest class ever, a hundred and fifty-four, I think it was a hundred and fifty-four students, and, uh, great speeches, a lot of awards, and very inspiring, so.
It started with a hundred and sixty-nine, but a hundred and fifty-four did graduate, and it is an impressive, and they actually, I talked to them. They're going to go up to a hundred and eighty next year, and the year after, they're going to two twenty. Because I said, you know what, when you look at our graduation rates, they're, we are at the bottom of the nation. And we need this program to be much more, um, it's an amazing program. The kids that go through it, um, yes.
It was really,
One of my sons probably could have been enrolled in it.
Would have been a good, yeah.
I don't know if he would have,
Personally, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if he would have passed, but he could have been enrolled.
So anyways, so we're reconvening now this afternoon. We're going to do one matter that was on the consent agenda this morning, items six and seven. Seek a motion approving those, uh, minutes from December second and December fourth.
Yeah, since this morning and during the break, I was able to review those items, so I'll move approval of items six and seven, the minutes from December second and fourth.
And I'll second the motion?
Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, but he wasn't actually there, so that meeting, at those meetings. Okay, so the next item we're going to move on to is on our, um, action items is item number twelve, deliberations on the lower bridge plan development. We've set aside two hours this afternoon for this. Uh, we may take less, we may take more, we don't know. We've got another item set at four thirty, or four o'clock. It's something we've spent a lot of time on, so we've got some background. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, for the record, Will Groves, Deschutes County Planning. I have for your deliberation this afternoon, an appeal of the hearings officer's decision in file number two four seven nineteen four oh five CU, four oh six TP, four oh seven SMA, seven forty-one appeal, and seven fifty-seven appeal. Uh, the, uh, you conducted a public hearing, there was a post-hearing record period, that record period closed. Um, we received additional information, the entire record has been placed before you in the binders that you've received.
This is, I think this is what we got after the hearing. So that's, I think that's a record since I've been here of the most we've gotten since after a hearing of no more record.
Call that binder four of,
Binder four.
Binder four of four, we're holding it fifty-four hundred pages, hoping that you'll write a couple more for us today. Uh, so we've approached, we've approached deliberations in a number of ways. Uh, typically, what I'll do is I'll, I've identified in the matrix, um, how many do we have here? Fourteen items which require your attention, and, uh, we can either dive into a particular issue, if you've got one that you'd like to focus on, or we can start from the top, we can go straight to deliberations, or I can refresh you on the parties' arguments, um, as we did in the, uh, the prior meeting last week. Uh, it's at your pleasure.
I'm comfortable kind of working from top to bottom through the matrix. We'll say our piece as it goes or ask questions.
I think I am also, I mean, we have, we probably all have general thoughts about things in the project. I assume they'll kind of come out as we talk through the topics, but they come out in the order of the, of the topics as opposed to, you know, some other, um, deal. One question I had, if we're going to do that, is the green, did you make any changes between this draft and this draft?
None.
Okay, so, because I marked up the older draft, and I just wanted, I didn't want to miss anything if there was anything there. Yeah, so we, we could start in on that. We've got maps, we've got presentations from previous, we've got new information. I think that's one of the interesting things is to have so much, a lot of times we leave the open, the record open, there's not that much new information. This one, there's substantially more than there usually is, so. Okay, are you good, how about you?
Yes, starting from top would be great.
And would you like, uh, frequently I provide, kind of, uh, read you through the matrix and provide you, remind you of the parties' arguments on that? Would you like to enter into the question, or would you like sort of a, a refresher on the nature of the debate about the question?
Well, you know, there's, I think there's fourteen items here, and I think we probably have more certainty than, on some and less on others, or more knowledge, or, maybe you just kind of, I think from the start, let's go through it, but we may be able to abbreviate it somewhat as we go, because that's my thought. We've all had, had these, you know, we had a chance to go through the matrix at a previous meeting, so we kind of know the, um, the gist of them, so.
All right, that sounds good, and let me know if I can, uh, give you more or less detail as we go along. So our first question is, is a plan development application allowed in the floodplain zone? Uh, the, uh, the floodplain chapter, um, does not expressly allow floodplain, uh, does not expressly allow plan development. And we have, um, two different hearings officers, a two thousand fifteen hearings officer and a two thousand nineteen hearings officer weighing in on the same issue and coming to different conclusions. Um, you'll note that in the later questions, in the face of this code ambiguity, the parties argue if this use should be allowed, um, and that's addressed below. Uh, I, I noted as your floodplain manager that there's no significant flood concerns here with this. So this is a pure question of code interpretation. Um, opponents have argued that the plan development is not a use listed outright or conditionally in the floodplain zone. They argue that the three types of subdivisions cluster planned and subdivisions generally may clearly have different characteristics and are intended to be reviewed and approved under different standards. Uh, the fact that subdividing land is permitted in the floodplain zone does that, does not mean that planned unit developments are permitted. And that they argue that legislative code amendment is a better process to resolve this question. Uh, proponents for this, uh, application and the, the interpretation that plan developments are allowed in the floodplain zone, note that the language used in eighteen ninety-six oh four oh is clear, plain and ambiguous. They argue that planned divisions, uh, planned developments are subdivisions. They note that the proposed subdivision is consistent with FEMA guidelines. They also note that the outright open space in the floodplain zone corroborates this interpretation, and this was a key portion in the here, the two thousand nineteen hearing officer's thinking. And, uh, they also note that this, uh, this matches the, the county's approach to this interpretation from about nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fifteen, as documented by a long series of decisions.
Want to do your comments, too? Staff comments?
Oh, um, I, uh, I started there.
Oh, yeah, okay. So really, I'll start off on this one. To me, this is kind of just, are we taking the two thousand nineteen hearings officer's approach or the two thousand fifteen? And, so I'm going to, I'm more aligned, I think, with the two thousand nineteen on this particular issue. So I would, I would be a yes. I think that the plan developments aren't mentioned, but subdivisions are, and this is subdivision. And I, I think if, if you can have open space and a subdivision in this, in this floodplain, you can, as part of, or connect to the floodplain, then you can have a planned unit development. So I, the only question I had was, there was some disputing of the, whether those nine decisions really, uh, the, the applicant, um, argued that those proved that this has been done before. I noticed in, when I was going through one of the arguments from the, one of the appellants or people commenting was that they were distinguishable. So I didn't know if you had any perspective on whether those nine cases were, were similar to this or not.
So staff's perspective on this is that these nine cases don't have a precedent-like value. So there's nothing about those decisions that bind how you act today. Now, land use is unlike criminal law in that regard, that you're rarely, in this case, bound by any sort of precedent from a, from a case before.
Well, not binding, but are they similar?
And the, the issue that was argued and the hearings officer found persuasive is that these nine cases, uh, that were cited in the record, none of them explained their thinking. So in each case, the approval is only possible if the floodplain is allowed to be part of the development. So a number of lots were allocated, that number of lots was dependent on an acreage that required the floodplain to be counted. Uh, what the hearings officer was concerned with is none of them really explained their thinking, that said, it is a little confusing how this is allowed in the floodplain zone. The code isn't as clear as it might be, and the decision-maker then explains themselves. In each case, it was just implicitly assumed that it could be allowed. The only other two, the two possible conclusions are either that this was, each of them in turn was a type of error, where someone just didn't miss, didn't understand basic math, or the more persuasive conclusion is that in each case, the decision-maker assumed that the floodplain could be included and used that as the basis of their calculation.
Questions or thoughts?
Well, and I support floodplain as outright open space in this interpretation also, so I go down the same path. Um, you know, that, it's interesting, thanks for asking that question just now. So none of the previous, um, the history were precedent, had precedent-like value. I mean, you know, it's good, good words to put around that now, I mean, because that does put it in a category for me also, as you, as you learn about these. But I do support the fact that, uh, you know, that floodplain zone can be supported as open space for this application.
And I do likewise.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, on the matter, on the second matter, and this is a related one. This is a question of open space associated for a plan development is permitted in the floodplain zone. Uh, plan developments are required to have sixty-five percent open space, and the proposal includes use of floodplain zones lands as part of that open space acreage. Uh, I note that, uh, the first deliberate question largely determines the answer to this question. Opponents argue that although open space is listed in the floodplain zone, uh, open space slots within a PUD is not a permitted outright use in the floodplain zone. Uh, they argue that if a PUD can't be permitted, then an open space can't be permitted either. And the definition of open space does not provide any express authority for the floodplain zone lands to be used in, as open space in a PUD. Uh, proponents and applicant argue that the floodplain tracks would be preserved and continued in their present use and would conserve and enhance natural resources, they would protect streams and promote conservation of wetlands and enhance recreation opportunities. Uh, this is important because that is the definition of open space in relevant part. And that the floodplain zone is the only zone in the county where open space is a listed use. There's no need, there's no permit needed to conserve land in its present use, and so the code drafters must have intended to allow open space associated with PUDs specifically as listed in the floodplain zone.
Okay, and we want to take this.
Kind of answered, using these words already the first time, so I mean, I do support this. Uh, so yes would be the answer. Uh, so yes would be the answer. And as I say, I was already using these words, I guess.
It seems to me that, um, this question is kind of consistent with the first one. It'd be hard to change the interpretation of the second one if you've agreed on the first one. The only challenge I have that's a little bit with this project is I, I've always thought of open space as kind of the part of your property that's a little bit over and it's just open, and this is an open, and all of this, a lot of this open space is a hundred feet down the side, so it's not really open space like I think of it. It's, it's unbuilt-on space, but it's not, you can't see it until you get up to the edge, and so it's really a different concept to me than what I think of usually as open space. I'm not gonna change my mind, but it, but it doesn't serve the purpose that lots of times open space does, 'cause there's even talk about whether you should have, prevent trails down there, so then it's open space with nothing, you know, just anyway.
And, I mean, I, I would, that's defining the term even more than I would think, but I understand what you're saying, you know? Ooh, that's, that big area that you can see is open, opposed to, yeah, this, uh, elevation changes.
Yeah, just down over the hill, so.
It's definitely, um, it's beautiful space, and because it is in the floodplain, um, it seems that there are going to be enough rules that people really will be respecting it and, um, you know, leaving the visualization that it, for people that are driving by.
So are you a yes on this question?
Yes.
Question number three, does the floodplain zone land count towards the planned unit development housing density and density bonuses? Uh, planned developments get a housing density bonus, uh, from the usual one unit per ten acres in the R R ten zone. Um, they get instead a, a bonus at one unit per seven and a half acres, and this increases the number of units allowed in the development. Uh, this planned unit development relies on R R ten and floodplain zone land calculated together to reach the, uh, density calculations. Opponents have argued that P U D isn't permitted in the floodplain zone, and therefore floodplain zone property can't be included in the density calculations. Uh, they also note that in the R R ten zone, planned and clustered developments shall be allowed at an equivalent density of one per, unit per seven point five acres, but unlike the R R ten zone, uh, no P U D density calculation, density bonus is provided in the floodplain, uh, lot size requirements. Uh, proponents, proponents argue, and the applicant argues, that the listing of open space as a use is allowed in the floodplain zone means that open space associated with the P U D is allowed in that adjacent zone, the floodplain, that the county has historically allowed floodplain zone acreage to be included in open space and cluster and plan developments, and that the code expressly allows for gross area calculations to determine density and lot sizes, and this, uh, including of the floodplain acreage is supported by the county code and historical practice.
I would say the fact that county code and historical practice would be the two, determining factors of, um, counting it.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a yes on this question about, does the floodplain zone count towards the density? I think the question that might, you know, there's some of these that maybe end up at Luba, so I'm, I'm, I think it's possible that Luba will look at this somehow differently, but I, um, I feel like, um, the goal of, of increased density when you do cluster developments and planned unit developments is, is in our code and, and it's been there a long time, and it's for this purpose, and they've done that by bringing the housing lots together, so.
Well, and I do support kind of asking these questions in a very, um, well-defined manner with, with answers in support of the record here, you know, this is what's going on. So I do support yes, uh, to continue reviewing the application in support of that floodplain zone land.
All right, question number four. Uh, this is, does sufficient financing exist to assure the proposed development will be substantially completed within four years of the approval? Uh, this is an unusual requirement that comes out of the Plan Development Code, and it requires a demonstration of this financing to complete the project as proposed. Uh, prior to the hearing before the board, the applicant had not provided detailed cost or financial information, which had caused hearings officers to say that this criterion had not been met. Uh, opponents argue that the cost estimates provided don't address additional environmental concerns. They question how the applicant can be flush with cash in a money market account but require approval of this development to finance further development on the adjacent property as described by the applicant. They have concerns that the applicant is Lower Bridge Road LLC, but that applicant is not the signer of the application or the holder of the money market account offered as financial stability, and, uh, they wonder who owns the property, who controls the property, and what financial means are available to Lower Bridge LLC itself. They also argue that a number of lawsuits are directed at members of the development team, and that these would potentially wipe out the money market fund offered for financial security. The applicant argues, uh, they provided a cost estimate prepared by a registered civil engineer, uh, to complete the subdivision, including both soft and hard costs and a ten percent contingency. The applicant has submitted a letter from the CFO of Real Vest as the entity responsible for financing the project, together with a money market statement demonstrating funds sufficient to and committed to building the project, and the applicant submitted evidence demonstrating that the Real Vest Chapter eleven plan for reorganization was completed and accepted, uh, and was fully completed in twenty-ten.
Well, I don't know if you clearly said, but on your statement, originally they had not, um, provided detailed cost or financial information until this current hearing.
That's correct.
I think until is a really important word here.
So this is a matter of first impression before you to evaluate this evidence and conclude if it does or does not, uh, represent to you sufficient evidence of the financing to complete the project.
So when I see this, I wonder what the history is, the legislative history of Deschutes County having this in our code, because, uh, you know, it's either owned by somebody or somebody else, uh, and it, this is where, uh, an approval will attract the capital to create this, you know, improvement that's being discussed. Uh, you know, I almost feel awkward in, in having this in our code. Uh, you know, I do support the fact that we had, information has been provided, and, uh, you know, cost estimates, uh, are on the books now, so, uh, but, yeah, to, to use this as a, uh, a tool against not getting an approval almost doesn't jive in, in my world.
I think that's, I think that's a great point, um, because I think it's so hard, um, when you look at something like this, to really know if the, I mean, there's estimates here, but are those really what it's gonna turn out to be? You know, I thought the, um, one of the opponents raised some good questions about what other environmental things might come up while you're developing it that might throw the cost out. Um, but yeah, the, the idea that we're supposed to decide if there's enough money in the till to do the project, it's, and, and then on the other hand, you look at, well, they've already spent a certain amount of money, a significant amount of money, why would anybody do that if they couldn't go the further route? I mean, I, I guess they could do it to get permitted, but I, I feel the same way, that's a good way to put it, that should we even have that? But beans, it's in there, then it's a matter of, well, do, are we just getting to a substantial evidence? Is that our burden of proof that there's, that according to, I mean, we could say there is substantial evidence in the record that the amount will be this much, and they have this much in a bank account, and there's enough connection of the people applying and, you know, all that kind of lack of clarity between the applicant owner, you know, that's been kind of picked apart. Um, you're assuming people are spending millions of dollars, we'll sort, that's not gonna be a problem in the way either. Um, what, I was trying to find again the, um, the actual estimate from the civil engineer. Do you know what item that is on the, on the schedule? I couldn't find it on the table of contents.
Give me a moment here, I'll work through the record. I think that the, if you want to play along at home, I think that this is gonna be in binder three, page, no, this is gonna be at the testimony exhibit.
Binder four, so, uh, 'cause it was.
I have binder three, guys.
Oh, yeah, part of three, there you go.
Might be in binder two, hold on.
Oh, I didn't, that's.
But I can, I can get this for your reference. Should be at, it was presented to you at the hearing, if I'm correct, I'm a.
That would be all after.
Okay. At the hearing, right? That's correct.
Did you have an idea where it might be?
Give me a moment to locate this here. Uh, so here we are. I'm looking in the October twenty-eighth applicant's submittal that is applicant supplemental evidence on appeal. And I'm gonna take a moment, uh, going through that and see, there we go. Um, so that is, that is dated October twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen.
Um, in binder number three, it's one eleven.
Item one eleven in binder three, yes.
There it is.
I've got it. Here I go, yeah. So, so while I'm looking at this, do you have any thoughts on the, the questions we're asking about how are we supposed to judge whether that's, I mean, I could see him spending a million, I could see him spending a million and a half, I could, you know?
I think that your question about why is this in the code at all, my understanding is that planned unit developments are allowed to be relatively complicated developments. You might imagine a multi-phase approval that in, you know, it even contemplates that we're the zoning to allow there be commercial and residential aspects mixed in. I think there might be some concern that the, the developer might put together a nice mix of amenities and development, develop the most profitable part of it and run. You know, the case, that's not the case here because they proposed to plat the, and the development all in one phase. There's, uh, only one step that they're acting under, and so there's no opportunity to partially complete it. I think that's the concern that this code's trying to get at. In this case, we have an engineer's submittal. Plating a subdivision is a, you know, a usual thing that people do, there's roads and infrastructure that are required to be put there, um, and there's no one contesting in the record that the applicant's, uh, cost estimate based on what they included is accurate. So I think that we have substantial evidence that that is a, a reasonable calculation. To the extent that there would be any doubt cast on this, this would be if there was some, if you believe there was some continuing concern about environmental concerns, for example, and that they hadn't factored in some pile of money to deal with that issue. Um, I don't know that, the, the code doesn't give you enough specificity on how you might deal with that, that uncertainty.
And the, the path to get to this point has been through environmental. I mean, that's, you know, that's not expected on the other side of this decision. And, and it could be there, but, yeah, it's not, that's how we got here.
So you're saying that, if I heard you right, that the reason it's in the code is to avoid a, a planned unit development that took many years to actually get built out, that this should be one thing, that the entity should be able to do it and get it done, as opposed to like some big drawn-out subdivision with lots of lots, and so, I mean, I, you know? It, it's interesting, like you said, that it's in the code, and the code is just that long. I mean, it's only, there's no like, there's no detail after it about what substantial is, or, you know, or what complete is, or anything, you know, it's just.
With your statement that this could be a more complicated or mixed use or commercial aspects to a planned unit development, that brings us back to this is basically one-dimensional, you know, rural residential parcels. Uh, and in, in the rural, either you, once it's platted, it's either has a house on it or it doesn't. So I mean, it's kind of one-dimensional instead of the multi-dimensional scenario that you mentioned.
And the rural residential actually was done in, what, two thousand and eight?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Has this, has this provision ever been interpreted in another case, or?
No, there's been, it's either been ignored, hand-waved at, there, no one's ever, like the hearings officers in this case, said that, you know, it's asking a question that, you know, in some way has to be answered and likely requires some demonstration. I think you're on the right track, saying that there, you know, is there substantial evidence, you know, that, that, that the, one, that there's a, a cost estimate that seems appropriate, and two, that there's some source of money to meet that cost estimate.
Well, and also having a cost estimate in the record says this is what we were thinking at this point in time, you know, so, 'cause things do change also.
I mean, and even on the other side of the funds are available, you don't know if that's the only call for these funds, or, you know, so that's kind of just a tough test, both ways to prove. But I do think there's substantial evidence that, um, of compliance, so, I mean, yes on that.
And I support yes also.
Thank you. On to question number five. Uh, this one's a little bit esoteric. This is, has the floodplain zone land received an exception to the resource use acreage standards under Goal Three? So this proposal includes, uh, several approximately ten-acre floodplain lots, and the floodplain zone's unusual in that it has an acreage standard that specifies that minimum, uh, oh, sorry, backing up a step. Uh, generally speaking, minimum lot size is in resource zone lands, so those are farm and forest lands, are eighty acres, with certain exceptions, and this is part of the state three goal, uh, state Goal Three program to preserve and protect farm uses. Now, the floodplain's unusual in that it falls across a variety of type of lands, and when it was crafted originally, it has a, a split provision for minimum lot size. It says for those, uh, lands that have not received an exception to the statewide planning goals for resource uses, that the minimum lot size is eighty acres. Uh, that floodplain zone lands that have received such an exception have a minimum lot size of ten acres. And on the subject property, the floodplain zone holds a surface mining comprehensive plan designation, so it does not hold an agricultural or forest designation, it holds a surface mine designation. Opponents argue that the, uh, that the minimum eighty lot, acre lot size is required, and that's because the floodplain zone portion of the property has not received an exception to the resource goals, uh, Goal Three in this case. Uh, the applicant argues that the subject property was rezoned from surface mine to R R ten in two thousand and eight through the non-resource designation process, which is an alternative method to the goal exception process, and that the two thousand and eight zone change decision concluded that there are no Goal Three, Four, or Five resources on the subject property, and that this acts as the equivalent of a goal exception.
Well, I, I think that last point that you just read that is really the key to it, the two, the two thousand and eight zone change decision really changed the subject property zoning, so there isn't an exception needed, so, um, it hasn't received an exception, but it does, I guess, the answers over here didn't really, of the question, the board decision point really is, there's a second part to that question, has the floodplain zone land received an exception to the resource use acreage standards, or does it need one? And so I'm saying it doesn't seem like it really needs one.
And I agree with that, you know, is, are we asking the right question in the way the matrix is set up? Because, uh, yeah, if, if it doesn't need one, and that's the position of the county, that's not the right question at that point.
I agree with that.
That's a good way to frame it.
Do you want, want to just leave it there, or? 'Cause I, I mean, that, the question and the answer, yes or no, it kind of doesn't jive with what I think.
So all, what I've got here in notes is, is that, um, that the que, that this question is reframed as, does it need an exception, and the answer is no, and particularly persuasive was the two thousand and eight zone change decision in that matter?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good, I was wondering how that was gonna go with the question.
All right, uh, number six, has the environmental history at the mine been adequately addressed and resolved? Uh, the hundred and thirteen acre, uh, subject property was previously used primarily for aggregate mixing, high-grade mining and hot mix asphalt plant operations. Uh, diatomite mining and processing was conducted primarily on the adjacent property on the west side of Lower Bridge Road?
Uh, real quick, yeah, so let's, I just want to acknowledge the question, so environmental history at the mine site, so referring to the application site for this application, or across the street?
That's correct. Um, I think that this is, or this question, I think, is most broadly as I'm framing it, uh, I'll be trying to, uh, I'll be trying to draft a, a decision that, you know, that meets that your understanding of the application, and there are many arguments about the environmental history of both the, the subject property and the property generally. So I think the question that we're interested in here is, you know, do you believe that the, maybe another way to frame it is, do you believe that the environmental history has been adequately, uh, told and concerns resolved in association with it? And it is specific to the subject property, but one of the things that came up quite a bit in the process was, are there things on the adjacent property that continue to, uh, act as a concern for the suitability of development? that continue to act as a concern for the suitability of development on the subject property?
So I'm still not real clear, so environmental history at the mine site? So are we referring to just the application site, subject site? Or the mine site as both parcels together, you know, the bigger footprint?
I think that the parties have consistently seen this as a two-part question, and I'll try to frame it again. One is, is the dirt in question suitable to put people on? But a consistent question that was before the hearings officer is, is the dirt across the road troubling enough that you shouldn't put people on the subject property? So I think that the mine site when we're thinking about, we're thinking about it broadly, but through a lens of that, you know, that this, where you're going to put people to live has a certain standard associated with it, and then there's concerns about the neighbor.
Would you say that this question's written the way it is because of the record? Because, you know, as I say, I wouldn't, you know, there's an application for this parcel, for these lands, but we have to refer to the larger picture. So then, do you feel like you're in a spot where the question needs to be asked like this because of the history and the big picture?
And I think that's the way that the record seems to frame it.
Yeah, so the record kind of drives us this path.
I think you did an excellent job of reframing the last question, so I definitely invite you to do that if you think it would be helpful. And so.
You're really saying to do it in two parts. The subject property, is that, is environmental history there adequately addressed and resolved? And then the second one is, is there anything concerning from the other part of the property that would, might influence, you know, would that somehow make a problem for the subject property? Isn't that really?
Yeah.
Okay. It's interesting. I hadn't thought about it that way either, but.
So to let you know my thought on this, to have an opinion that's different than the official state agencies, DEQ and Oregon Health Authority, wouldn't be our area of, wouldn't be my area of expertise, as I say, I wouldn't. So, I mean, this is it, you know, the official letter has been received and it's pretty clear, the position. So that's my, that's where I start, I'm just letting you know.
And their letters consider both of the questions that we were just discussing.
And answers it, yes.
Well, and there's two, there's the letter itself and then there's a letter with a bunch of pages of comments, questions and comments, questions. I guess, for me, what, initially I was really impressed with the DEQ and the OHA letters. And then after I read a lot of the opponents' information, then it got me thinking about, well, how good is the DEQ and the OHA letter when they have a, I couldn't, can't put my finger on it, but they have one of the letters that says, unless something else is found, you know. It's a clear bill of health unless we find something else. Well, okay, because then there's this issue of was other stuff buried? Were there other problems we don't know about? And I got to think, I mean, I trust what the agencies have done, but my own feeling was, well, how far did the developer go down into the ground and what? I mean, I was actually surprised the history of the site when I read the whole history of the site about all the things they'd done there. It's like even Precision Cast Parts was one of the bad, basically bad actors, I think, basically back in the 80s or something, which is now, you know, PCC Slossers is owned by them and Redmond and it's, you know, and they're a longtime Oregon company and. So I guess I didn't know what to make of that because there was, there were a lot of questions raised by people that researched it. But I also would think this developer would not want an impure site or any risks if you're, I mean, I don't think developers do that as much as they did in the 50s and 60s when they build on stuff that was bad. I don't know, there's just too much liability. Well, we hope not, yeah.
I mean, you would think not.
But I think that's true in terms of both the quality of what people do and the, how much checking because there's so much exposure. I don't know. So I was kind of left seeking advice on this question. What are your thoughts on it?
I felt like if OHA and the DEQ, you know, a lot of work was done. It was done over a long period of time. And if they felt comfortable in giving clean opinions, then, you know, I, it's not my area of expertise.
Clean opinions with disclaimers.
Well, of course, but it's always going to have a disclaimer.
But it is, that's the official opinion, yeah.
You know, did they do, you know?
Well, I don't know if it always has it, because we went through this with our landfill, our demolition at landfill. The DEQ is the one that certified it for OHS, Oregon State Cascades. Cascades developed, dig it up and reuse it and it was like, well, we're counting on them over there to be, and they rely on it, but I don't know if this is the same deal.
How long did it take them to come back with a clean opinion for the school? Was it like a year or six months?
Well, this, I don't know that that's the same scenario because it was in an enclosed area that they're opening up, so it's different.
Well, it's really critical because think of everything that went to the, went there in the 70s. You know, it's, there's, you know, there's so many rules now where you take things and you don't, you don't drop anything off.
Well, and if you read the history, you know, the history that was in here from some of the opponents was there was a lot of stuff at this.
Serious.
Amazing what they, how they used to do handpills.
Are we talking about the subject application property? Or are we talking about, you know, the bigger potential implication of what is across the street and the history of that?
Well, I couldn't, so like the barrels that were left, were those on the bigger property or on this property?
Well, this property was just the aggregate mining and hot mix asphalt plant, remember? So there's, there's.
I thought they showed some pictures of also landfill-type stuff on it. That's what I read, I could be mistaken. Do you know, Will?
So from the record, the lagoons and barrels that were stored as part of the county-approved waste site in the 70s and into the 80s, those were all on the west side of the road, so not on the subject property. There was some significant amount of public dumping that had occurred across both properties. As you know, anytime there's a open road into a vacant property, it turns into an impromptu dump and the applicant did pull off significant amounts of waste off of both properties from this type of.
On both properties?
On both properties.
So that's.
I guess the scenario I would see, that's if that's public dumping, that would be disposing of, you know, household or could be commercial waste. But there wasn't, there was never a, here's a hole, let's go fill it up with waste. You know, it was more like, let's sneak in here and put something on the ground. I just think that would be the scenario.
The record though is sneaking, I think it was a wide-open advertised spot for like, didn't it say 700 users over a eight period? Yeah, I mean, that's what, I think that's what I read last night and I don't know.
So the opponents looked into this and staff is a little bit confused about this because there, the language that the opponents found suggested that there were, you know, there was a time where the county was primarily dealing with waste by some of these open dump pits and was looking to transition towards something more like not landfill, a sanitary landfill. And there were questions about, you know, where were these existing dump sites? And, you know, and what property might be suitable for a sanitary landfill? The question of where the dump is specifically in the vicinity of Lower Bridge, I don't know if that was resolved. There was one article that suggested that it was on BLM land. There certainly is some evidence that, you know, that people over time were doing at least impromptu dumping on this property. But I, at least from staff's perspective, I don't know that the opponents connected that there was some sort of, everybody pulled up to one place and tipped their truck over on this property and there were 600 or 700 people using it for that duration. That evidence, and staff looked as well and didn't find anything to make those connections.
So, you know, this is a complicated land use matter, kind of like KC DG was, which was the ski lakes and all the different things there. And we, we did create a couple of conditions on that one or whatever. Because I felt confused by this and this issue of how much dumping was there and was that an issue or not? I'm less concerned of what went on on the west side affecting the east side than I am what's on the east side. And there was, this also goes into that issue about the rim rocks being, whatever, covered over, there's a word they use in the, but is there any way we could request or require verification of that or, and I don't know how you do that exactly. I don't know much about the landfill business, but.
So, you know, the question that you're asking, I think at its core is one of, the study that was undertaken was done by the Wallace Group at the, you know, at the behest or under the direction of OHA and DEQ. So OHA and DEQ said, look, you know, when you have a property that has this history, we're going to look for these sorts of things in these sorts of ways.
So they guided the search and they told them how far to dig and where to go and all that sort of thing and?
The scope of work was, it was particularly the DEQ process was a public process. The applicant proposed a way of doing this work. DEQ came back and made a number of corrections and additional requests. And in the end, DEQ said that this meets our standard of investigation given the history of the property. And in fact.
By it being a public, what do you mean by it being a public process?
So DEQ's review was something that was subject to comment, to a public comment. And in fact, many of the people who were opponents in this process were commenters to the DEQ process. So they were inputting information into that record, they were allowed to participate.
Oh, those were all those comment, questions and, there's pages, yeah, that's, okay, so that was part of that process of cleanup, okay.
But I struggle like you that in the end, I'm not an expert on this type of work and so I, you know, I, you have to choose whether or not you can rely on DEQ and OHA to have set the scope of work and to evaluate that work and conclude that it's adequate for the residential use in this case. I don't have any basis to second-guess them. The one condition that I had put to consider in here was this, the notion that maybe a shared public water supply might be appropriate. Currently, the applicant has proposed individual wells. And as I noted, the individual wells are not subject to any sort of required water quality testing where a public water supply would be. In terms of, you know, and when looking at the record and looking at, you know, the history there, to the extent that some unexpected contamination were to come up, it seemed like most likely the concern was that that would show up in a water supply and that having a public system would provide a basis for it to be tested at least annually. That said, there's, you know, the due diligence for testing the groundwater was done. So, and there was no, there was no evidence in the record that there is any such problem.
You're saying one source of a well is less risky than 19?
Because it's required to be tested.
But you can't add that as a requirement even though it's a private well? You couldn't, you couldn't add that?
As a condition of approval that all the individual wells have regular.
That they're just tested?
You know, Oregon Water Resources required it or something.
So when you have a public water system, there are rules that come from the statute that have to do with this testing interval. So this, the shared system would be legally required to be tested and would be overview, would be, there'd be oversight by state organizations and county organizations to look at these annual well reports. I think it would be relatively, it'd likely be relatively difficult to enforce this on individuals. So, you know, if we were to put a condition of approval, you, final owner, shall submit well reports every year. One, that's a lot more analytical testing because you're doing 19 rather than one analytical test. And two, you know, then the county's in the position of having to chase that.
Well, the people that are at risk are the people that are using the water that are testing it. Well, I, that's interesting. I don't know what I think about, I mean, I think there's probably reasons that they chose a single, you know, one well, one property system. And frankly, they aren't that difficult to do, there's lots of them in the county. And whereas a water system, you have to have all the piping and then you have to figure out how it's going to be managed and.
And the capacity, don't you have to have the water, the well capacity for one, yes?
19 times.
That would be enormous, I would think. You're almost on a well system.
So the question really is whether we can rely on what the NFA letter says? Is that all we should ask for is responsible decision makers, I guess, yeah?
Commissioner, one thing I can add in, and I'm sure the board's aware of it, with regard to individual wells like that, the lenders are going to require purity tests and, you know, what are called well tests in terms of how much it can, gallons per minute and whatnot. They're not going to lend if there isn't a good well and a good producing well. That's kind of takes care of it in that context and the public rules that well, that the well's talking about are for public wells because you don't have that, in essence, that private oversight by a lender that says, you know, you need to show they have a well that's pure that you can drink from, otherwise that devalues their security in that property and that produces it a decent volume. So that, that's kind of a check and balance on some of the concerns I think you folks are articulating.
So I support that the letters do provide adequate information that issues are known and resolved.
In regard to the subject property?
Yeah, to the subject property, yeah.
And I do also with the condition that the water be tested.
Well, and I support the water testing, I don't know that I'm, I'm not leaning towards adding a condition for a shared public water system at this time.
Not a shared one, but it's like what?
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
David, Mr. Doyle legal said that, I know for lenders, you do have to have your water tested.
No, that's typically a one-time test, not an annual, so it's typically to get your mortgage, you have to, and you're going to be operating off a well, onsite well, they require that type of.
And, I mean, there's other development within walking distance of that area that doesn't have this, you know, shared requirement. And if there was a question, if one, and if one neighbor said, hey, I think everybody would go get tested. I mean, you know, it's just, it's all of it, it's not just because of this one footprint.
Yeah. Well, I'm, yeah, I'm not inclined to require a one-well, you know, a water system to serve the 19 lots. Because there's, that whole area's got lots of wells that are independent homes. And I guess I'm not as concerned with the pollution from whatever, when activity went on there, reached the water table, you know, based on how deep it is. As much as I am concerned with anything that might be more closer to the surface, it really isn't affecting water, it's affecting, so, but. So it just really comes down to whether, I thought the, I thought the opponents asked, raised a lot of good questions. In the day, if we have to make a call, can we rely on the DEQ and OHA? I think we need to be able to rely on that without proof of something else. I don't know, because that's why they're there. So I'm inclined that way with the subject property. What about you, Commissioner Derr?
I already said.
You are too, okay. So what about the neighboring property, the west property? Is anything, has any of the environmental history of that not been adequately addressed or resolved?
So you're proposing that we kind of split it into answering that question?
Well, I think it's been raised, yeah, and I don't know how much we have to answer it, I mean.
Well, so I, to answer that specifically, if we want to answer this question twice, you know, I mean, it's declared safe for residential use, so that, I mean, that, I kind of get to that same conclusion. This subject parcel, even if, you know, even knowing that there's something across the road in the river, it still has been declared safe for residential.
Well, one part of the objection from the opponent was the NFA letter does not cover the entire subject property. So there's the part that's over along the river, I think, to the west that wasn't part of this NFA letter. Is that right, Will?
That was confusing to me. The applicant responded that the reviewed area, the environmentally reviewed area included the entire, the entire subject property, including the 29 acres west of Lower Bridge Road. And when I reviewed the DEQ materials, that's the conclusion I came to as well. So I'm confused that the opponents felt that the, that the relevant, that the part of the subject property, 29 acres on the west side of Lower Bridge Road was not subject to scrutiny.
Well, that 29 acres is for open space floodplain qualification, correct?
So it wouldn't, and it wasn't where there were. So, it wouldn't as, and it wasn't where there were... So, you're saying that that's been kind of asked and answered?
That's my belief.
Any other concerns about the west property or...
Not for this application.
Thank you. Question number seven. This is, has to do with scenic resources and if they will be adequately protected. The proposed development at Lower Bridge Road is located in the middle of the Schutze scenic waterway. That's a scenic river area category for the state scenic waterway. It's also in the county landscape management combining zone. The planned development code has a special requirement that adequate provision be made for the preservation of natural resources such as bodies of water, natural vegetation, and special terrain features. Opponents argue that the proposed density and clustering along the river would deplete the river corridor's relatively pristine condition. And Oregon Parks and Rec preliminary assessment is that this would undermine the values of the scenic waterway designation, that the scenic waterway designation was established to protect. Also argue the 19-lot riverfront housing development might not be granted approval by OPRD. Such development is not in line with the existing agricultural and low-density development and would require significant vegetation screening and rimrock setbacks to ensure that the structures do not intrude on the view from the river. Proponents and the applicant argue that the county implements a scenic protection through the landscape command, management combining zone. This implies, this applies to the subject property and requires individualized review of each proposed dwelling through a land use process prior to building permit approval. Likewise, scenic waterway review through OPRD is also required for each proposed dwelling prior to the issuance of a building permit and is a condition of that land use approval. The issues that State Park raises with regard to scenic waterway designation are not related to the review criteria for the subdivision request. And the hearings officer found that with the conditions specified in the hearings officer's decision, it included setbacks from the river and rimrock, prohibitions on the applicant seeking exceptions to rimrock or landscape management review standards, prohibitions on the applicant seeking exceptions from scenic waterway rules, that this issue had been adequately addressed. One of the things that came up in the record and staff flags as a condition to consider is some additional structural setback from the canyon rim regardless of rimrock. As you saw in your site visit, the site's unusual in that there is a rim-like topographic feature without there being the rimrock that's typical of the canyon. And some of the concern had to do with the visual massing of the houses as seen from the river. That's the concern in the landscape management zone. The, the applicant didn't propose any particular setback and there is none required to staff's understanding in the code. But it was an issue that was raised in both the 2015 and current process. The hearings officer felt it did not impose such a restriction. He found that, that that was not necessary.
So, one thing that's, you know, I started out thinking that this was, yeah, everything was, was met, all the tests were met, because I'm familiar with the landscape management combining zone, how that works with the county where they have an opinion about what the house looks like. And we've talked about before, how far it sits back, what it's made out of. And I've, I've dealt with that on houses. And then also, you add on top of that the State Park's approval. That would add another, another layer to that whole thing. But then I got, what I don't know really is about the, what a scenic waterway, how that changes things and whether we're protecting... Those, those other two things I mentioned have to do with how it looks, how it looks, the house looks from down on the river. That's what they look at. They say, "Well, we can, we can see your house from the other side of the river, so therefore you have to change the roof color or you've got to do this or that." But I don't know, there was an argument made by a couple people about, well, several people about, "Well, this is different than other places." They compared it across water, for instance, where it's not a scenic water, a river area. It's not a scenic waterway. And I, at that point, I didn't really know what, whether that was, how different that was and who's the protector of scenic waterways. Because I do think that's, the things that are going to be most difficult for people to live with that don't want this, the houses, the visual, visibility of the houses will be the thing that will bother people the most. So, I, I mean, because they're used to a unfettered view of the mountains and, and now they're going to see a row of houses. Even if they're set back, they'll still see those. They won't see them necessarily from the river, but they'll see them... So, what does a scenic, I'm just babbling here, but what does a scenic waterway create? What's that?
So, State of Oregon designated certain segments of river as state scenic waterways. They, and the notion, and there was a notion of, like the LM Zone, there's a concern about the, the views, the view shed in that, in that waterway. And I think OPRD's concern here is a specific one, which is that they, like the county for landscape management review, will review these dwellings one at a time to say, you know, "Is this reasonably screened and is its visual impact in the, in the river corridor reasonably mitigated?" And so typically, they'll, they'll, you know, if there's no tree planting, they'll expect some tree planting as a condition of the approval, just like the landscape management combining zone, to provide some visual screening. There's no anticipation that these structures will be not visible in either, in either program, just that they're somewhat screened. To the extent I understand OPRD's comments, their concern is, is that they, the scenic waterway program would likely be okay with one or two houses, but as you lay out, you know, all 19 of these along there, that they believe that the cumulative effect of that would be incompatible with the, with the state scenic waterway program.
So, when will they find, when would they find that, excuse me, but when, when would they find that out? When they go in for the application and the parks would say, "Well, we're, we're not going to let you do it because it's visible"?
I think that's the concern is that the, you know, that the, that, and I, I've never seen this happen before in my experience here, but you could, I think what Parks and Recreation is saying is that you might have a scenario where they would say, "Look, one house, some trees, that's not changing the character of this." But by the time you get to 19, that they might dig their heels in and say, "This is a cumulative impact that we can't approve under that code." The hearings officer and applicant argue that that's something that's not done at this point, that the subdivision, in fact, has no visual impacts on the river. It's roads and infrastructure and, you know, stakes in the ground for lot lines. Applicants and OPRD say that, you know, that you're setting down on a, you're, would, would argue that you're setting down on a path where you've created lots that in the end may not be developable because one or more agency might, might argue that it couldn't be developed. I think that's the, that's the nature of the debate here.
Do you know how far up the other side of the river the parks could look across at? I mean, because these are, a lot of it's pretty steep, you know, so you, unless the house is up on the edge, you won't see it from down by the river. You might see it from the house across the river. So, and it is possible to pull them back from the edge, so... Do you know what their jurisdiction goes, where, how far up the river sides the Parks and Rec goes?
I'm not, so they, they have an, I think like the county, they have a significant radius off the river of structures that they review. So, I'm not sure if it's a quarter mile or an eighth of a mile, but it's certainly more than what's involved in this, the entirety of this property is an area in which, were you to build a structure on the property, you would have to go through their review. The question that they would then have to ask is, is it adequately screened? You know, through color choice of the structure as well as plantings to provide some screening.
You could also think about one or two-story houses. You know, if you do like a, you know, a lower one-story house that's, you know, not supposed to stand out and then you're moving it back, I would think from down below, at least, it would be far enough back that it really wouldn't be standing out. I don't, I drive that road a lot. I don't know, I, I'm always looking up there and wondering how, what a, what a change it would be. But definitely, you know, a two-story house may be more impactful.
And you can see in our landscape management review, there's a, there's a sim, there's a structure similar to this where generally structures from rimrock have to be 50 feet back. Here, there's, as you saw in your site visit, there's very little actual rimrock. There's an exception standard in there that effectively says that a structure has to be set back in equivalent to its height. So, if the structure's 30 feet tall, you've got to be 30 feet back. As, you know, so at a one-to-one slope ratio at the toe of the slope, you wouldn't see it because you'd be looking up at that angle. You know, I don't have a suggest for, a suggestion for a specific approach if you felt this was approvable with some sort of additional setback condition, but that's one way codes have approached that, is either a fixed setback or one based on height. And that gets to your point that taller houses are more visible.
Right, I mean, and in the R, what is it, two-acre lots at the minimum, so...
Yeah, but about an acre of it's pretty, on most of the lots is over the hill. So, there's about a-
Right.
Half acre to an acre for a buildable site on most of the lots. I mean, it's, it's pretty...
But still, um...
Well, a low-profile, no, it's, it's solvable in terms of a, a lower-profile house would be less visible. And if you're back far enough, it's even less vis, I mean, and I don't, that's why, with landscape management, you can go in the county when you're working on your project and say, "This is what we're doing." And they'll say, "Well," and they'll go down and they'll even look from the river and they'll look, they'll figure this out. But I don't know how Parks and, Oregon Parks does it. And I don't think you, I don't know that you can go in ahead of time and say... And I don't feel comfortable adding an additional setback because I don't know what the, I don't know if the setback they have works, to be honest. I don't know, what do you think?
So, this could, I don't know that we would have, be able to put words on a, yeah, an approval, like a condition, that work for everybody, you know? As I say, if we have rules and state has rules, I think there's going to be plenty of review of this situation. So, I do support that resources are adequately protected, so that gets to yes here. Because otherwise, I mean, this whole thing, yeah. You know, building less than the total amount isn't the intention of this project or, you know, and I'm thinking from the applicant's point of view. Either this is a hard stop or it isn't. And if it isn't a hard stop, then let's the agencies in our code, our current code, manage the situation.
I agree. I mean, I, I believe looking that we have our county requirements and state parks and recreation, both of those are pretty clear on what you can do.
Yeah, so that, so the man, this whole thing would be discussed other places then?
Well, you know, they didn't really ask us, they didn't say, I guess that's why I'm struggling because the question it was asked is, "Will scenic resources be adequately protected?" And my gut level is, well, if you have a row of houses, your scenic resources aren't as good as they used to be. So, then it's, but you're saying really, the question should be different, that the question should be, "Should we do something more to make sure scenic resources are protected?" Or change, you know, or improved upon, or, I mean, the, the thing I thought about was, if I was, you know, you know, I've never, I don't know what the developers thought or why they came up with these particular placements for the lots. But because they're a continuum of just right around a deal and there's no breaks, if there's even breaks, it would be more attractive if, than it is going to be with just a row of houses around there. But that's just my two bits, because I don't know if there may be a reason they have to do it this way. And so, my question is, I'm not sure about whether scenic resources will be adequately protected because I don't know how the state parks part works.
Well, I mean, I kind of get down to that same, I don't know exactly what's going to happen in the future. But will they be adequately protected? You know, I support that landscape management combining zone and scenic waterway designation are going to provide protections.
Is that where you are also?
I am. I know my neighbor had to paint his hay bar in a certain color because of the, you know, being next to 126. That put him in that category, you know, cost him a lot more money and he had to paint the right color. So, somebody is out there watching and protecting the viewing public.
So, you got two yeses and one, I don't know.
All right, thank you. Question number eight. This is, "Will riparian habitats associated with the Schutze River and nearby rimrock be adequately protected?" Again, planned development code requires that adequate provision is made for the preservation of natural resources such as bodies of water, natural vegetation, and special terrain features. Opponents argue that the intent of the PUD is to enhance wildlife protection by clustering development and allowing larger open spaces and that this intent is circumvented whenever a development abuts a riparian area as the most desirable home sites are always nearest the waterway. This PUD places houses and human activity as close as possible to wildlife habitat and maximizes all the negative impacts. ODFNW had recommended that the county ensure that there's sufficient compensatory mitigation plan in place to address riparian deer and eagle impacts prior to approving the application and urge the county to implement stringent setback standards for any future developments on the property. Oregon Parks also noted that the riparian area was surveyed during dormancy and it was not an adequate baseline to measure the existing conditions or set standards to preserve the integrity and biodiversity of the riparian ecosystem. The applicant argues that with the proposed development plan, even with the additional density, it provides more protection for the scenic and riparian resources than a standard subdivision would on the property. That the riparian area management plan was prepared by a professional biologist and contains prohibitions on any development in the floodplain and riparian areas with stringent and cohesive management strategies designated, designed to protect and monitor these areas. The proposed CCNRs contain funding, enforcement, and review provisions to ensure that the plans are carried out and progress is monitored by a biologist. Excuse me. And finally, the hearings officer found that with the conditions requiring setbacks from the Schutze River and rimrock, yeah, I'm going to need to get a drink of water.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd offer you mine.
Yeah, I'm halfway through a glass here too, yeah.
The first one.
Want to take a quick break?
No, I'll be ready as soon as I get a drink here. The, the hearings officer found that the applicant, based on the conditions that he had proposed... Oh, thank you.
Oh, a cough drop too, what, what a deal.
Awesome. All right. That the, the hearings officer concluded that with the conditions of approval and all the requirements that these, and in particular with the riparian area management plan the applicant had proposed, that these resources would be adequately protected.
So, when the, you know, if we were to approve this, is it built into our approval that we're going to approve all the thing, these conditions that the hearings officer has suggested? I mean, the setback from the, like, that are mentioned in that first paragraph there?
That would be at your choice.
But he, that hearings officer came up with them as things that would be good to have or something?
That's correct. Typically, the board would adopt the hearings officer's decision with, with or without changes. So, you could increase, decrease, or maintain the same level of conditions that the hearings officer included. But he found that there were certain requirements necessary to ensure that these resources would be protected adequately under the code provisions. And the, the applicant who filed an appeal, it was a part of the hearings process, did not object to any of those, those particular conditions as, as appropriate to deal with those issues.
My feeling on this is that the, the move in development and nice homes, which is, these are going to be nice homes because these are going to be valuable lots and it's kind of like the west side of Bend, that the, in the west side transect area where it's to the builder or developer's advantage to do things right and do them to better. And because then it's appealing to the new, the modern buyer. Modern buyer isn't looking for the cheapest thing. They're looking for the, they're looking for ecologically positive housing developments and things where the riparian area would be a sales point. Whereas maybe 40 years ago, that wouldn't be the thing driving the buyer. Now it is, it's a huge thing for the buyers that have the wherewithal to do these kind of, you know, houses like this. And you see this on the west side of Bend and that, that whole transect area was concept was that, that we'll do better by having these limited, you know, all these rules about environmental stuff. So, I'm not as worried about this as I, the scenic, the views are, would be more impacted to me than the riparian, frankly. the scenic, the views are, would be more impacted to me than the riparian, frankly. What are your thoughts?
I believe that the, um, the exceptions, banning, the fencing, I believe that all those should be maintained in our document, and, um, there is a park that's already there, that you go right around the corner and there's the park, so, um, there's already trails in the area, and I don't think we should add any more. I know it's been there for quite a while, and, you know, it's, I, you know, I, I don't think the river system needs any more trails right there.
So, yeah, the riparian area management plan is, uh, you know, part of this application, so I support, uh, you know, the protections will be adequate, uh, and, yeah, if we get to prohibition on new trails, I'm, I'm supportive of that, too, so, I guess, you know, just, is it mentioned, is it prohibitively, it's not prohibitively, prohibitively?
They were, they could have trails, but I, I'm not really sure if they should be coming down to the river, from that hill.
So, it, it's hard to, I don't know if, we've been briefed on what the developer was planning in terms of trails on the west side of the river, but, so there's two issues, one is, is there another trail along the river, and then the other is, like we're talking about, is, can each homeowner go down over their hill?
But, and I think of it, I think of it as a posted trail, you know, um.
Open to the public?
A route, yeah, a route, or, or community members, yeah, however, because that'd be private property. So, as I say, I, I did, it may not matter if that, it says that, you know.
This, this is an interesting question. The current riparian area management plan contemplates pedestrian, new pedestrian trails, to the extent that those had wetland or floodplain impacts, you know, that they would be subject to those regulations. I think your concern's on point, is that if were you to prohibit a new trail system, that, you know, each landowner might make their own way down the hill, you know, over time, and might even, because the, uh, the hill slope itself isn't in a wetland or floodplain, there's no grading or prohibition on them going out there with a shovel and make, each of them making their own trail, and I think that the developer's intention with this trail system provision was to make, you know, a, a single point of access usable trail for the, the community generally, so I think it's an open.
One end or the other, that they're, or do you mean, but, I kind of, I keep thinking about the beach, where people have their route to the beach through, between the two houses, I mean.
Out at the coast, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about here, is there'd be one place where people could make their way down to the river, or, I don't, I actually don't know if that, I don't remember if we heard anything about that.
Yeah, so the, I, to my understanding, the developer didn't include a particular, a particular proposed trail system figure. There were some, uh, there were some people in the record concerned that the ramp's allowance for trails would be a source of new impacts, bringing people and dogs down into these sensitive habitats, um, but, you know, staff notes the converse concern that, you know, that people, people find a way, and that without a trail, people will make their own way, um, that that may, that the prohibition on trails may in fact exacerbate the problem by.
Yeah, so that's, puts that in a tight spot.
Well, there is that one area, uh, between eight and nine, that's kind of a, I don't know if they're part of a lot or something, that's kind of a.
Track C, it's an open space.
It's kind of, it goes all the way up to the road, almost.
It's twenty acres, twenty point nine acres. But actually, yeah, it goes all the way around.
If you're trying to discourage people from coming down over each hill, you could put a, I don't know, this is really getting into developer planning, but it, it seems like it'd be better to have only a couple access points if there's going to be a right to go down to the river. I didn't really look at it that closely to see whether, you know, everybody can go up and down the other side of the road, or river, right, currently? Can, that's open to the public?
Yeah, the Redmond and Park District maintains, yeah.
But you can go past their land, can't you? Doesn't that trail go up further and?
On the, on the side, on the north side, uh, from Mr. Beard's property that we visited, uh, he had characterized that the trail ended on that side near his property, if I remember correctly.
It does.
And I'm not familiar with what the extent of the trail is on the south side or on the subject property, if there's a, if it's more than a fisherman's trail there, and how access is taken.
It looks like there's lots that go all the way down to the water on the other side, Lot seven, Lot eight, Eagle Rock.
And, and, I mean, some of the lots, it would be, you'd be taking your life in your hands trying to approach the river, uh, from, you know, the individual properties, that there's all but vertical cliffs on a few of them.
Yes.
Well, that sounds like the coast, yeah, where the, those is, sit up on the, so what was the thing, this is staff comment, condition to consider prohibition on new trails in the ramp area.
Uh, so that was.
Yeah, but, I mean, what is your, your idea, the scope of it?
This was something that was brought up as a concern, was that, you know, that, that pedestrian, that encouraging pedestrian access down into the riparian area was to bring these new impacts, um, and just, uh, your discussion today made me think about the fact that people will likely end up down there one way or another, and then in fact, you know, an organized trail system may be the least impact. I mean, conversely, you could include a condition of approval prohibiting, um, maybe earthmoving and trail creation on individual lots to access to the river, and require that there be a consolidated point of access for the subdivision to, to get at that, but now, now we're, we're crafting something that's, uh, you know, we haven't been briefed on in any depth, you know, we don't know specifically where that might be suitable, or what the developer's intention was with regard to that.
It says on here, Track C, open space, so, does that mean that anybody can walk on that, because it's considered open space? But then again, it's right next to the river.
Well, it's open space for the development.
Right.
So is it, actually, that's the question I had, was it, does that make it common area for any of the owners of the, like, the homeowners association, or?
So if you look at the, uh, riparian area management plan, there are certain uses that are prohibited, and, uh, otherwise, uh, those uses that are afforded to property are not prohibited, so I read it to not prohibit, you know, if me and my kids and my dog own a lot up there, that there's no reason we can't go, you know, find our way down to the river and take a swim. There's no, uh, there's nothing in the CCNRs that I, to my reading, that prohibit that type of use.
So, one thing we did on the transect, when we were, we approved that transect for the west side of Bend, we, we asked that they, there was an issue over there about access of the public to the river, not completely different than this, but the point is, we made a condition that was kind of general along the lines of, uh, developer will work to reduce access points to, you know, three or fours, or a limited number of access points from homes down to the river, or limit the amount of trails on the road, and then it's left up to the developer to comply, but it's kind of a goal for the public good, I guess, and then, but we have something in there that's more than just do what you want, or don't do anything, it's like, do something reasonable, and again, maybe the, it seems like a complete prohibition is not
It won't be.
Really, one probably won't be observed, but two, uh, maybe more, um, more than is right, or something, or, so I guess I'd think that, something that would say about reasonable number of access points, or, I don't know, good developer will figure this out, I think, I don't know, what do you think of that?
Well, uh, so, I, I do support that riparian habitats will be protected, so that's, that was our starting point.
Yeah.
And then I thought, okay, well, you know, prohibition, that seems reasonable, if we're going to try to protect a little more, and now we're talking about a whole lot of things, and they could all be down a path, so I don't know how we could get to a set of words that would be in a land use decision along these lines at this time, because we're, we're on the same page, is my point.
That's what I'm saying, it's like we did with, I think what we did with the west side transect, that we just said that the, because it remembers that, just the two developers, we said they'll, in their planning, they'll figure out a way for public access to the opposite, they wanted act, we wanted access down to Cheveland Park. This is kind of, can you come up with some words that we might try out on that, or is that, I mean, I, because that is a value to, having a house there would be their access to some extent, but it's, I actually don't expect it to be a huge problem.
Yes, well, I'll anticipate as we draft your, your decision for your review, that will include a, and flag a condition of approval just along the lines of the west side transect zone provision, to see if that's something that you'd like to ultimately adopt.
Because it looks like their property lines all, and when the slope stops, is right where their property line stops, so, for most all the lots.
Well, I think the property line goes to the middle of the river.
Well.
Doesn't it?
No, uh-uh, not for there, see, there's all end up here, right at the bottom of the slope.
Oh, I mean, for the development, yeah, I see, yeah, you're right, you're right, it does.
So.
As you get down to the.
Yeah, you get down, and then it's open space, so.
That's what you're saying, yeah, that's absolutely right. All right.
Thank you.
Did we get enough out of that?
Definitely.
You will.
Uh, question number nine, I think this is a, I hope this is an easy one for you, and it is, if the applicant has adequately addressed the surface mining impact area criteria, um, the, uh, surface mining impact area is a zone that comes, that radiates out from adjacent mine sites, and it's designed to protect the mine from nearby residents. Uh, surface mines are one of our goal five inventory resources, uh, they're an important economic resource that the county's chosen to protect, and one of the things that can be a problem for them is moving people too close. Um, the hearings officer found that the applicant had, had failed to seek surface mine impact area site plan approval at this stage, and that the criterion had not been met. The applicant then provided before you additional evidence to confirm compliance with these requirements. The applicant clarified for the record and showed that they did apply for the surface mine review, that they paid the fee and submitted the subdivision and, the subdivision plan and builders' envelope plans. Uh, the applicant submitted further evidence on appeal establishing that all the proposed buildable areas met the requirement to be over two hundred and fifty feet from two nearby surface mining zones, and that the applicant agreed to record as a condition of final plot approver, approval, the required waiver of remonstrance against all the lots in the subdivision, and that waiver is a, something signed by the landowner acknowledging the surface mines preexistence nearby, and waiving their right to complain about surface mining operations.
Is this the same waiver of remonstrance that one of the opponents kept asking why we didn't get it signed already, or why the developer hadn't gotten it signed already, or something?
No, that's, that's a good question, so it's not that one, um, but since you brought it up, and it's not otherwise addressed in here, as part of the two thousand eight, uh, decision rezoning the property, there was a requirement that prior to development of the property, so at, at the stage that we're at now, that a conservation easement be granted to the county. Um, in Title eighteen one sixteen and in the landscape management combining zone, there's a requirement that at, uh, that prior to development, that riverfront properties grant a, a conservation easement to the county that boils down to basically, I promise to leave it alone for the first ten feet next to the river. Uh, opponents argued that that was, you know, why hasn't this thing been recorded yet, and it is specifically because it is not required to be recorded yet, by the very language that they cite.
Okay, okay. So this, this one, we're, we think this is a yes, I think, don't we?
Yeah, this is more paperwork and documentation and timing, so.
Yes.
Yep, I agree.
All right, thank you. Number ten, is demonstration of compliance with rimrock standards required in this decision? So, uh, rimrock's a thing defined in the county code, it is a overlying stratum of rock, or a rock face in a river canyon over forty-five degrees, um, that the rimrock, uh, special setbacks are required for rimrock, and that rimrock setback determinations are required a part of a landscape management site plan review prior to building permits. Uh, staff notes that this is a public process, and staff believes that, uh, what's proposed here, that the rimrock review is not being impermissibly deferred to a later date, so there's a concern in land use that you are, uh, putting off a, putting off a decision to a point where the public can't participate, and specifically with the rimrock in this case, there was some concern that if you didn't make decisions about the rimrock now, that you were closing out the public in the future, and staff, uh, believes that, staff, um, notes that there are, the landscape management review for each of these houses will, uh, raise the rimrock standard, and that each of those are noticed public processes, so, um, that's a little bit confused by the argument that this is being impermissibly deferred. Opponents do argue that, uh, that you can't defer until the building permit stage, showing that the rimrock setbacks will be met, and that the development proposal admits or otherwise defers a future determination whether an approval standard will be met. Uh, they argue that this application must be denied, um, and they argue that without determined, county determination of where the rimrock's located, the setback dependent on it can't be fixed, and building envelopes cannot be determined, and without determining building envelopes, the feasibility on each site cannot be assured. Applicant, uh, responds that the rimrock setback standards are part of the landscape management review, and that the hearings officer found that the appropriate time to consider this issue was at the landscape management review required for each structure, um, at the time of, prior to building permits, and that the applicant's proposed subdivision application in this case is to be judged on the current condition of the property, and under the current laws in the code. Um, the hearings officer, involved himself in a question about buried rimrock, so one of the things at the mine site, as we previously discussed, is it's real common to push off overburden, you know, there's going to be dirt and other things that aren't what you're trying to mine, and, you know, particularly back in the fifties, if you had a good cliff to push them off, you did it, and so that, according to the air photos that are available, that in fact happened on this property, there's concern that maybe there was rimrock there, um, and the hearings officer said that that was, you know, something from fifty years ago, that that, there might be buried rimrock, was not of something that he was concerned with in this case.
When we were up there, it was, you know, we couldn't really tell if there was buried rimrock, and, and then on the pictures, I kind of, it's interesting looking at some of the pictures that were, um, turned in, that tried to show that, because that was hard, I mean, there was a couple places you could see where they'd pushed over material, but, um, actually, I would think the lots would be worth more with rimrock exposed, actually, than dirt, but.
Well, it was a mining and aggregate site previously, that's why, so it's, they just wanted to have it flattened.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, but I'm just saying now, as a development site, it would, if rimrock is, is cool, so people would like that, I think, but, um, the issue is whether we, whether something has to be done now, or, or not, right, that's what we're.
I think the applicant would like you to find in this case, that, one, that, that the, like the hearings officer, that the appropriate time for this evaluation is with the individual home site approvals, and that, uh, given your, your visual inspection of the property, that the rimrock on the property is so limited as that there's no evidence that it impacts the ability of individual sites to be developed. So that's the part B of this question, is, you wouldn't want to go and plot a bunch of lots that weren't developable, so if there's rimrock everywhere on the property in a way that excluded the possibility of developing those lots, the code would, would ask you not to approve those lots at this point, um, and.
In other words, you're saying if the lot, if you unburied it all, rimrock would go all the way out to where the road was going to be, or something, and, so there'd be no buildable lot, if you unburied the rimrocks?
I think that the, so with the, the question of the buried rimrocks, the hearings officer's thought was, is that that's, that's a long time past, and that that's, you know, certainly, we wouldn't want to encourage applicants to, who in modern times had rimrock that they found inconvenient to push dirt over it, uh, we would be back before you, I think, on that issue, but in this case, you know, that the, we're talking over fifty years ago as part of a mining operation, and the air photos aren't clear enough to see if there might have been rimrock in those areas, at least to staff's review. Um, so the question of buried rimrock, at least to, uh, the hearings officer was one of, not of interest, that the question was the current state of the property. And then, the, uh, so the question would be, if you imagine that the property, let's say that it had extensive rimrock associated with it, and that they had made lots such that it was impossible to put a house on the property in accordance with the rimrock rules, so that the entire lot, developable lot was within fifty feet of rimrock, um, that the code would ask you to deny the creation of that lot, that you, you wouldn't want to create a lot that was fundamentally undevelopable. Um, the, the opponents argue that without some sort of specific rimrock survey at this point, you can't make a good decision on whether these lots are all, some or all of these lots are ultimately undevelopable. Uh, applicant argues that they've shown building envelopes, rimrock's limited on the property, as you saw in your, uh, on your inspections, and that this is not an issue at this point, and can be dealt with on a proper property basis later.
I would agree with what Will just said, I'm, I'm really glad that we went to the site, and it was, I didn't really see any rimrock, I, you know, you were thinking you should, and maybe there is some down the hill a ways, it's kind of been buried, but, um, I, I don't believe that that's going to be our decision at this point, because it's going to be reassessed shortly.
I agree with that.
And I agree with that, too. A long discussion, it's an interesting, interesting.
Question eleven, uh, are the proposed lots developable, given the applicant, the applicable constraints on the building lots? So, uh, Title seventeen, section thirty- So Title 17, Section 36170 requires that the size, width and orientation of lots or parcels shall be appropriate for the location of the land division and for the type of development and use contemplated. This provision is intended to prevent the creation of new lots that would ultimately not be developable, as we discussed in the prior criterion. And the decision maker is asked to find that the lot layout would allow each lot to be developed with a house, a well and a septic system, considering these constraints. The opponents argue that the small lots with often significant acreage down the canyon slope aren't feasible to develop, given constraints such as rimrock setbacks and well to septic, septic separation requirements. That the required setbacks and dimensional standards are quite restrictive. That rimrock determination will be complex. And determination of the location of the true rim is critical to the protection of the habitat, river and soil stability. And that the board should require a rimrock survey before a site, before this plan is approved, so that the true site dimensions may be determined for feasibility analysis. The hearings officer found that with the conditions set forth in the decision, that, that the lots would be developable. The applicant's conceptual building envelopes and typical residential building plan for a 4,000 square foot home, well and septic, as well as reserve area for that septic system, demonstrate that there's ample area on each lot to cite a dwelling and all necessary residential components and meet the required setbacks. And in addition, they had a local builder who testified that he had reviewed all the evidence and attested to the fact that the lots contained ample area to cite a residence and necessary infrastructure.
Well, I felt like most of the, you know, doesn't take all two acres to put a house on, even if you need a well and a, and a septic. So, I mean, you can do it on a half acre a lot of times. There was one, a couple lots that are pretty small building footprints, but I assume it's in the inter. I mean, the developers thought this through, because if they're going to develop these and put, put them up for sale, they have to have somewhere to build. And they wouldn't want to have sites that aren't buildable. So it seems like the most protective way to make sure that happens is through the developer's own plans, because of the, their interest. So, and I thought the, you know, the builder knew, who addressed that, said that, basically, that they were, he thought they were buildable, so.
So the question is, are the proposed lots developable? I don't think the answer's yes, so the matrix is backwards on that one, but.
Yeah, the questions were backwards.
Answers backwards.
Yeah, if yeah, it's, if yes, continue reviewing. If no, right.
No, thank you.
I noticed that, too.
The critical factor is that you have to have your well 100 feet from your septic system, current rule. And that seems like it can be easily, you know, resolved with the lot sizes. In fact, they're starting out at two acres.
All right.
Well, I'm just looking at, what I always consider is a couple lots that, like eight, six and, you know, they're two thirds, two thirds of the lot is kind of.
Eight's right here.
Oh, it's, it's different. Okay, yeah.
It's a triangle.
Those are the new configurations. It's bigger than what I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Other than the old, the 2014 map, but, okay.
Great.
So question number 12, this is a, a new one before you. And it had to do with some historic roads that were out on the property. So Kitter Road, Willamette Valley Wagon Road and Lower Bridge Lambert Road exist over the subject property and the applicant's current tentative plan does not appear to show these right of ways. Opponents argue that the applicant does not show these three public right of ways that traverse Tax Lot 502, where the proposed, project proposes open space and tracks E and F of the cluster development. And raises the question, do these right of ways count towards the 65% open space requirements? And if not, the applicant should would fall below required acreage standards. Staff notes that these road areas are allowed to be counted as part of the property. We're looking at DCC 1804030, there's a definition of lot area. In relevant part, it says, "The hearings body shall include in gross lot area all streets, roads and easements of access to other property that would accrue to the lot if the road, street or easement were vacated." So typically, in the event that there is a, a road across a, a section of property, if the road department at some point goes through a formal process of vacating that road, the property then goes in equal parts to the adjacent landowners. And the county code recognizes that these can be counted towards the gross acreage.
And these roads were actually on the west property.
Yeah, in the open space area.
Right, on ENF.
Well, it was interesting that they found all this. Nunzi had dug this up or research had found it. Because that's, it was new after the, at the hearing or after, right? It was new information. It was also interesting to read some of the old county commission discussions about whether these should be vacated or not, went on and on and on. Notes are very long, Sharon, very long notes. They go on to every detail of Commissioner DeBohn said this, Commissioner Henderson said this. So anyway, but it seemed like this would be, they don't undermine the acreage calculations, given what the definition came from engineering. It reminds me a little bit about the Sisters Airport one, where remember we had that open space that if the taxiway wasn't part of the deal, then it didn't make up the number, percentage. And so that was a big deal. But this one, looks like there's a different definition of whether it's included or not, so it's more clear. So.
Yeah, so I support that decision of no and continue reviewing the application.
Yeah.
I support the no also.
Question 13, is the applicant authorized to make this application? Opponents argue that the actual ownership of the property is split and that the application made to the county lacks, lacks the full authority of the land ownership to be processed and approved. They note that mineral rights were split off the ownership of the subject property or currently held by an Oregon corporation that has been dissolved. And that's a Central Oregon Diatomaceous Earth Incorporated. The applicant responded and said that Paul Christensen, as the president of Real Vest LLC, signed the application. Real Vest Corporation is the sole member of LBR Manager LLC, which is the manager for Lower Bridge Road LLC, which is the property owner. And that under 2208010, applications must be submitted by the property owner or by a person who has the written authorization from the property owner. Applicant owners argues that Paul Christensen is in fact the property owner. One of the, I think what the, the opponents raise here is this question of when you have multiple owners of a property, how you accept that application. And I think this may be a matter of first impression for the board. Hearings officers have visited this question before. 2208010 talks about that an application shall be submitted by the owner of the property. And that there was, has been prior analysis that in this case, D means A or an an owner of the property. And in other cases, there were issues of, you know, an owner of sufficient right to make the application. Here, it doesn't appear to be that complicated. It appears that it's undisputed that Paul Christensen is through a series of corporations, the authorized person to make this application.
So your conclusion that would be a yes, correct?
I support that. You know, this is a very open record process period and there's, you know, civil court if there's somebody disagreeing about ownership or whatever. So this is an application that hasn't been contested, other than by opponents of the application.
I do support it also.
It seems to me that it's, again, in the interest of the parties, they would want to make sure they have the right people applying. It looks like they did in this case, so.
And our final question, this is, does transferring density from floodplain zone lands to a residential zone land act as a plan amendment? Opponents argue that the proposal allows undevelopable land in the floodplain to be credited towards new additional residential density in upland areas. And that these additional residential units were not accounted for when analyses of housing, infrastructure and protection of goal five resources were conducted. And that this change in code interpretation undermines the assumptions and conclusions of those analyses. The proposal, they argue, would act like a post acknowledgement plan amendment or a PAPA. And that an economic, social, energy and environment, or EC, analysis should be required. And that this interpretation allows for the upzoning of developable property by shifting to floodplain, by shifting floodplain low zone lands, the density would be shifted from the undevelopable portion to the developable RR10 lands. Applicant argues that open space is a listed use in the floodplain zone. And that the listing of open space as a use in that zone means that the open space can be used associated with a planned development in the adjacent zone. This language was in place at the time of the adoption and acknowledgement of the goal five program and remains in place today. And that the use of the floodplain zone acreage as open space in the present request, with a cohesive stewardship plan prohibiting any development in the floodplain, is consistent with the goal five program and does not authorize a new conflicting use. Staff notes that, staff is unaware of any case law regarding a quasi judicial application acting as a de facto plan amendment. This is a new one for us.
Yeah, it's almost an interesting question, because it's such a different way to ask the first question we started with is, you know, can it be, can floodplain be used as open space? But, you know, with state land use and the history and what a comprehensive plan is relative to zoning, it's an interesting question. You know, that's, that's what I would conclude. But, yeah, I mean, I don't support the fact that we're, we're making a plan amendment by making this decision.
I agree with Commissioner DeBohn. I think it's, this is the one where if, I've said before, we're kind of the halfway point between hearings officers and Luba. And this is one that Luba could, probably would decide more than us. But, but I, I agree with you, the consistency with the rest of what we've done, just to continue that. So I'd be a no on this.
And I would also be a no, occurring with what my two other commissioners have stated.
Thank you, commissioners. This was a voluminous record and I, we're deep dive into the materials. And we will, the applicant as the prevailing party will be offered an opportunity to draft the decision. Staff will review that and bring it back before you. In particular with the condition, a potential condition that you had considered, like the west side transx zone for trail access down the slope. And we'll get that back at your first available convenience.
Yeah, maybe, you know, given that they're drafting the order, they, maybe they can come up with some ideas that would, would work with us, that would meet that need. Good. Is, are we on a timeline for this, or?
January 28th.
So are we going to try to bring it back next week or are we, we don't have another meeting after next Monday until January?
It'll be back to you in early January.
Early January, okay, all right.
So as Chair, I've been in this spot before where we just did a deliberation down this path. And like the media or, or members are going to want to know clarity on was this, you know, approved or denied? Even though we don't have the document completed. So I'm just offering that just from experience, if you want to, you know, kind of make the public statement that, you know, the applicant, the review has been approved pending written record or however you might want to say that.
Yeah, I think that's important to say.
It's just, I've been, after the meeting, and yeah, you can clarify that. But after the meeting, sometimes I've had the media ask me, was it approved or denied or what's going on? You know, so it's just.
I believe it'd be accurate to indicate that the deliberations have indicated a tentative approval on the part of the Board of Commissioners, subject to the, the written documentation, which will come back, at least the initial review of that in early January.
So I'm just acknowledging, I've been in that spot before.
Yeah. Yeah, so I agree with what Dave said, that it's been tentatively approved. Waiting until we get the final drafts of the deliberations and the findings. I also meant to say this was a challenging set of facts. And I know there's people on both sides of this issue that have strong feelings. And it's been very long coming, when you go back all of many years to when the first was gone, went to rural RR10 zoning. And, and hopefully, if the project moves forward, it can be done in a nice, an attractive way, so.
Well, and the history lesson about what happened out there in the 30s, 40s and 50s. I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting also, you know, just the, the history.
Well, the change of our use of resources.
The activity that was out there back in the day. Yeah.
Well, it's certainly changed how we use our resources and what we consider waste and what we do with waste and from the earlier time in our last century, so. Good. Any further comments?
Yes, we definitely have become much more respectful and responsible on where, what we put into the earth that shouldn't go there. And hopefully, this might help our, you know, just to support our recycling program in Deschutes County, that we need to be very aware of things when we're throwing them away.
Great job, Will.
Thank you, Will, for.
Thank you, Will.
Good, yeah, I appreciate you saying that. So we'll take a quick five minute break or. We're set to convene, or, on the next matter at four, so I think we'll go ahead and take a break until then. There may be other people that come for that. And it's been a couple hours since we've been working on this, so.
Since we stood up, is what I was going to say.
Oh, since we stood up. Joined us, we're going to reconvene the December 18th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting for Deschutes County. We have one remaining action item on the agenda, which is regarding the Terribon refinement plan and the future kind of the roads improvements up there. We had a briefing from, or work session with ODOT specifically last Monday. They had gone back and kind of reworked some things and given us two options. And I felt like it's important that we just talk about it, where we all are individually on this and what we're willing to do. I was hoping we might give some clarity. We're, we've been getting a lot of, the whole, public input's changed dramatically since a month or two ago. We got a bunch of emails after the 14, the meeting on November 14th. Those of us that had not supported the couplet, being told how, whatever irresponsible et cetera we are and how we were going to lose all the money and all the accidents would be related, result of our efforts. But then we've gotten other emails saying to move forward on option two. Got a bunch of them today. I don't know if somebody generated this campaign, but it's, I wanted to say one thing about this that. Oh, well, there's a bunch that came in today that I would, they're real one sentence type. As a resident of Terribon, I'd like to see ODOT move forward with option two. And option two was referring to the, the interchange and other safety improvements, not the couplet. So I don't know. But I just want to say a couple things about the process. One is, is that I think it's very un, it's not very useful to try to figure out exactly where the, the majority vote is or the plurality. Some people referred now, one of our people that we deal with and, on one of our committees referred to it as, well, the plurality is over here on this. I think if we really want to know where the voting was for people in Terribon, north, north Deschutes County, Crickery Rents, we should have an advisory vote. But I don't think that's, for me personally, I don't think that's how we should decide this. And we can each talk about our positions, but I, so I'm not really thinking there's a majority here or majority there or percentages. I just think it's too random and we get, we get hit. The other is that I think we've always had the philosophy that whatever we can get from the state, we will try to spend and spend wisely. So we're not at any point trying to say we wouldn't use the money or we're trying to turn it down. And really, the strength of what we were kind of waiting for was a meeting Gary and I had, where he said that after we'd first, I guess balked on the couplet as being the appropriate, or two of the three of us had, that he said, well, he was going to go back and look at other options and what could be done. And so I've not felt any urgency to get it done or that we were going to lose the money because of these decisions. And if I'd heard that, I would have maybe changed that. But appreciate ODOT and Gary and Bob specifically working to, you know, look at these other things of just doing interchange alone, et cetera. So that's kind of, those are a couple prefaces I wanted to make. I don't know if you each want to add anything or.
Oh, I have a lot to say.
Okay, good.
Of course I do.
Yeah, good.
Is it time around, Sharon? Well, I did spend the day yesterday at the ODOT meeting in Lebanon. And it was, it was my pleasure. Gary and I spent the day talking about things. You know, clearly, there's the people that love the couplet and then there's the people that don't. And I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. I, I really feel like if we did the couplet, that then you never go back. There have been no fatalities in Terribon for the last five years. And I think that's actually probably pretty amazing and remarkable that people, it's, it's, it's a dangerous place when you pull out and you go north or south, depending on what side of 97 you're on. But I just really. on, but I just really, you know, I talked to Gary, what is it, can we maximize everything to make Terribon the community that will help implement with the interchange? And if I know that the west side of 97, those people can get down to the interchange and they can go southbound safely, or they can go northbound safely, because that's really their problem, is going to northbound. And then the same with the east side of 97. And talking to Gary yesterday, he was saying that the goal is to slow the traffic down to 30. I did go through Terribon both ways last Friday, driving out to Warm Springs, and it really wasn't an issue for me, I didn't feel like it really slowed down that much, because you really do want to slow down to 30 miles an hour, you know, you want to, you want to keep things safe. You know, slowing that traffic down, I think is critical, as far as my preference would be for option two, and doing as much as you possibly can in order to make 11th Street clearly designated, when you come out Smith Rock, that you can go, take a right and you can go down to the interchange and you can go south. You don't have to go out and pray and sit there for 10 minutes, but, you know, that makes, it'll help make the system flow and then we'll know. And then the other thing, if we're really talking about the state's $20 million for this project, if somehow we could put the four lanes on from, you know, from Cinderbutte to Terribon, if we could get that moved up on the agenda for ODOT, if we could use our $5 million to piggyback with that, with the state, if they could find some money in order to really, like, let's really do 97 correctly, and so that was, that's kind of been how I've been thinking about it, and I also want to mention, I know this isn't why we're here today, but Ward Hamby, we spent time talking about that yesterday, that's an incredible safety issue. We do have fatalities out there, and Gary knows how important, and Bob, they both know how important this is. We have got to get that, that interchange implemented as quickly as possible, too. So those are my notes.
Initial thoughts?
Initial thoughts.
I have a handout for, for us here, just numbers. So this is traffic count data, here's two more, you can send them for Tom, and then I just have one for my right, and I was able to hand one to Gary Farnsworth right before this, oh no, I guess I have another one also. So traffic, transportation volume tables, it's from a document published by ODOT, just for reference, it was published October 2019, it's the 2008 volume tables, so it's a 300 page document, and it has highway 97, north and south, traffic counts on a daily basis, and then also east and west is what I put on here also. So if you notice the number, at the county line in the north is 13,200 trips at Jefferson County Line, and I didn't put it on here, but I just looked up, it's 8,200 at the county line to the south. So there's 5,000 more at the north county line. In the city, in the, you know, the downtown Terribon, 17,900 vehicle trips per day, and in Lapine, 9,900, because I heard Lapine being referenced a few times. So, you know, it is, it's, it's this area that is very busy, and Lower Bridge is part of that, obviously. And then the other three items are east and west, so in Sisters, 12 to 1500, in Tumalo, 15,000, 13,000 in Tumalo, and then in the far side, going out of Bend, it's 9,000. So it's just a way to kind of think about, what are we really talking about? Do we have something special in Terribon? And, you know, the answer is yes, yes we do, there's just a lot of vehicle trip activity in that downtown area. You know, I had made a motion in the past, and I didn't know I was stepping out there, I didn't see it like that. We manage change, we're managing growth, we've been doing it for a long time, and I had said, you know, if we put this couplet into our transportation system plan, let's plan on the mitigation around it, which is the specific property owners and the issues they had. So, you know, we're getting to a good place here, you know, the memo mentions option one and two, this is to the Board of Commissioners from Gary, is that, that's what this memo is. So yeah, option one and two are mentioned from here. So this option two is basically building out the interchange, doing other safety improvements, and then, you know, figuring out what the future is after that. So, you know, I don't see a downside to that at this point in time. But it was interesting seeing the, the volume table.
You know, kind of in response to that, so I came back from Portland Monday, spent, so I drove over Mount Hood, and so you spend all the way from Sandy up through all those little communities there on a five lane road going through.
Roderdenrin.
Roderdenrin, and all those towns until you get to government camp, it's pretty much all straight five lane, and then you get, in Sandy, you experience a couplet, in Madras, you experience a couplet, there's, I just would maintain those are different, but I'm still at a point where I think, I never went into the, to the refinement plan with a prescribed, you know, I didn't go in with a preconceived notion of what's best. I still think that either might work, but I, I guess I feel like there's been, although at the last meeting, there were a lot of people, and we've gotten response from people that just wanted to do the couplet, we'd certainly heard from a lot of people prior to that that didn't want to do it, and a lot of those people have, are members of the community. So I'm not, I'm, I'm there with, I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion, we approve option two at this time, with a couple, and be a kind of a, I don't know if it's the right way to do it as an advisory motion, or a, but I kind of would like to get this off our desk, so to speak, I don't think we're going to change, or I don't feel I'm going to change, so we could talk about whether others are or not, but, so I'd like to get it on record that we're in favor of this inter, this interchange, and we're going to do everything we can to make that good. I would like it to have an off ramp coming south from, from Madras to get off, as part of that, it doesn't really show on the map, but I really like that better than having to go up the circle to get off. And then maybe we'd have some other recommendations in our proposal, but that, I'd like to make a motion of that today, so that we can move forward with that, we know we're moving forward with that, they can figure out how much money they need for that, and what other things we can do. I like your idea about Smith Rock and getting people to use that circle, or maybe other things people could do to get from Smith Rock out onto the road. But, but, and then I'd like to see ODOT work with a continuing kind of citizens advisory committee to keep exploring these other two options in the long run. I think there's people in the community that now are vested in it, that would, would talk about, but really put our emphasis on option two, so that's, that's where I am.
So taking a half a step back, showing support for ODOT traffic planning and engineering. So there's the long-term planning, Terribon Community Plan, you know, what's the vision for the area, and there's always been general resistance for, to make that big five lane corridor through there, you know, there's just documented history of that decision. So my point, it generally puts it towards a couplet. So then, I'm just imagining, you know, there's engineering people saying, oh, well, if we want throughput, do this, right? So it's just kind of like the engineering solution, and my point is, it turned pretty negative, and it didn't need to, you know, the fact that there was preconceived notions like it was a political statement, but it's really an engineering statement, and so I'm just acknowledging that I, it was a shame that it got so much energy and lack of trust for a while, and let's just get past that.
I'll, I'll second your motion.
Okay. Well.
I don't want it to be lost in a couple minutes.
Okay, so I'd make a motion, and I don't know the format for that, but.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to get some, some clarity, maybe Peter Russell could speak to this as well. What was pending before you back when was an actual amendment to the TSP, I'm not sure if this option requires that or not.
It does not, per Gary, it does not require.
Just because you asked. Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner, Deschutes County, our county transportation system plan already has an interchange on the map and in the text for the Lower Bridge 97 interchange, so an interchange there is already consistent with our planning documents, so you don't need to do anything for that.
Well, I guess I wanted to just give, somehow close the, close the chapter in terms of our involvement as commissioners, it, ultimately, it's ODOT's decision-making process, it's their money primarily, so we're giving them direction, because we're getting continually asked and lots of input about what we should do, and, and it looks like we're holding up the process, can't make up our minds, and I just, so I'm trying to say we've, it looks like we've made up our minds for now, and.
Yeah, it sounds like the Board wants to communicate their position on the, the options as identified, and if in fact it's option two, that doesn't include any amendment to the TSP, so that could occur today in this proceeding. You're simply expressing the Board's position on, on what option you, you're, you prefer at this point, or the, at least a majority of you support.
So do we, do we need to figure out how to word that, or we're just talking up here right now, but I wonder, is there some action we should take so that?
We could certainly bring it back on Monday with a more formal process and wording. At the same time, since this is outside of the TSP, I think the Board can simply make a motion and move forward one way or the other on supporting what's been articulated as option two that includes X, Y, and Z. I think that'll be clear direction to ODOT and send a clear communication to the folks in Terribon as to what you're to, you know, where you're going, it clearly shows that option one and amending the TSP is, does not have support to go forward.
Certainly invite staff if they feel differently. miscellaneous ideas here, Dave, that like Commissioner Adair mentioned, trying to route some of the people from Smith Rock Park down to the, you know, to the right to get on that circle to get back going towards Bend, is a, you know, that would be something we'd like ODOT to do, I think I would agree with that, maybe Commissioner DeBohn would also, but I would like to see kind of a, something saying, these are our desired, if you're asking us what our opinion is, this is our opinion for now in 2019, and then another would be the, I'm still a proponent, like you said, of the off ramp coming from Madras to Crooked, to Lower Bridge, are you, so that's another recommendation. I do think it's still an open question of if you expand the number of lanes, how you do it, or it's something that's still, I'm not as pessimistic that they'll never get money for any more roads down there, I think we'll eventually have four lanes from, as people have talked, all the way from Cinderbutte to the bridge, I just don't know when that is, but I think we'll have it, I think it'll be for the federal, federal money, or, or there's a lot more state money that we're not getting our part of, but that's, so there needs to be some kind of program to how you go forward with that, I guess, but, so my recommendation should be some kind of a citizen advisory committee that works with you on what the issues are to, between the two. You mentioned the issue that there's been resistance to the five lane, I think they would never have really the money to do either option, it turned out here we didn't either, so I guess that's what I'd like to see, is if we had the money, what would be the choice of, what would make the most sense? Because you're right, there was 10 years or 15 years ago, they didn't want a five lane through there, but I don't know if that's changed, or, there's a lot of five lane on that 97, you know, and 26 and stuff.
Yeah, well, so, I just think this is, this is a, well, this is a good solution for now, I mean, yeah. And I, I don't know that we.
Oh. Commissioner DeBohn.
Oh, I know. I don't know that we need to vote on anything, but, you know, I'm just acknowledging, if it's not a TSP update and the interchange is in there, Deschutes County was planning and providing some capital improvement dollars in support of the project, and we will still schedule in partnership opportunities where they present themselves, you know, with, you know, and we've got professional staff to help us with that also.
I just, since I moved to my location, using Lower Bridge has always been critical, you know, it's, and I really feel that that's going to help, I mean, I don't use it that often, but the people in Crooked River around, I'm sure are going to find that the interchange and what they're doing with those designs, I think it's going to be really upgrading to the entire area of Terribon. And hopefully the Smith Rock people will like our fabulous signs that say, take a right, and you can get on, you know, 97 going south.
Going south.
Yeah, you know, we'll just make some really good signs.
Have it in multiple languages.
Yes, yes, because those people are from all over the world, those 800,000 people.
You know, I might suggest that we ask the ODOT folks if, if this is providing them with the, the level of clarity they need to, to move forward and, and kind of get out of neutral here, or if they would like something more akin to either a board order or some formal letter of support. Staff could certainly work with the commissioners and draft something up, I don't know if we can make Monday happen, but we can certainly try.
Like a motion and that we're in support of option two, and ask that these things be part of the safety improvements or something, or?
Yeah, and again, I, they're here and they've heard you articulate.
Yeah, I'm glad to ask if that's, would that be enough direction, or what you'd seek as something, a statement from us saying, we support the following?
Yes.
Okay.
It's some sort of advisory direction.
Okay.
And then reflective of what is in the letter specifically around option two.
He had quite a few improvements that he was suggesting.
Specifically, there's a.
I mean, we may have opportunity if we want to get Gary or Bob up here, and Chris also. Well, because my thought, my question would be, interchange is going to be X amount of dollars, and there's going to be lots of other little things that could be done, so then, you know, can ODOT do off of 97 projects in support of that interchange, and then, you know, what does it look like to schedule it up with our CIP? And that, I mentioned that a few minutes ago, because I think that's the big picture.
Well, I guess my feeling is, I just want to get the kind of advisory support of what we support for ODOT, what we do is, Deschutes County, we can do.
Send it out its way.
Yeah, send it out its way, so that, it seems like we've had this a long time, we've talked it through, and there, what you're saying, Commissioner Adair, is that?
Right.
There's a number of items listed as safety improvement, so we could discuss whether we want specific ones of there, or have a priority of those, is that what you were thinking, or?
Well, the, right, those are examples of all the safety improvements, I mean, safety is the number one issue that we want to address in Terribon, and with ODOT's expertise, I feel that they can make a difference. For the, not only for the residents, for the people, but the people that use, you know, 97 and the people that visit Smith Rock. I mean, they have.
Do you want to specify any of these, or do you want to?
I don't, I don't know, do we have to be that specific?
I don't think we have to.
I believe so, no.
Hamby.
You could certainly pass a motion in support of option two and encourage ODOT to, to implement as many of the safety improvements as, as possible that they've articulated or identified, and that'll be up to them.
Are there circulation-related local road improvements, curbs and sidewalks?
I believe that yesterday, they were making some comments about safety concerns, and I believe Gary was saying that ODOT, because they're doing the whole system, they, they can do the work on 11th Street? Is that maybe?
Yeah, no, I've heard that as well, they can do some up improvements there.
Because it's the whole system bringing safety up.
Yes, I guess I'm all over whether there's specific things that. So with us trying to get a motion or something to sign by Monday, we could come, you know, we could think about this further if you, I don't know what you.
So I'm, I'm kind of lukewarm about trying to do much more officially here, because if we're not amending the TSP, the interchange and safety improvements are, that's the path, so I'm just saying, I don't know that, I don't know how much more there is to do officially.
I mean, actually, I would think that we want option two, which includes the interchange, safety improvements, as many as they deem necessary, and possibly an access. safety improvements, as many as they deem necessary, and possibly an access going southbound from Madras where those parties don't have to go all the way to this interchange, that if it's possible to just go to Lower Bridge a little faster. I, you know, I'm not quite sure of the terminology there, but...
Another thing I'd like the motion to say is that we, we intend to spend all the money that the state of Oregon will give us, because that's been one of the accusations is, well, we're going to lose it if we don't use it. Well, we always spend the money.
Yeah, let's make that move.
So, well, I will. I mean, I mean, that's, I really believe that. I don't think we should say, well, we just need 12 million now.
I know, just...
Yeah, so I mean, to use that wisely and further. Did you have something, Chris?
Not to belabor the point, but there will be an intergovernmental agreement that we will enter with ODOT before the project's done as well. So there's another opportunity to, to work out some of the details that the board's contemplating a little bit. So after this, there will be another agreement.
Okay.
Good, okay. All right, well, let's get, let's have that drafted up and we can do it for Monday and put it on our agenda and we'll try to get something passed so we've completed it before the end of the year and we know which direction we're going, so.
I think there was a motion in a second.
Yeah, a motion in a second. So any further comments?
I'm not clear on what the motion was.
Oh.
Option two with the interchange and safety features.
Kind of an advisory motion that we'd like...
Right.
Yeah, I guess here, I'll remake my motion. So my motion is that we will draft a advisory...
Letter of support.
Letter of support on the Terriban road improvements, refinement plan, incorporating option two from Oregon Department of Transportation's December 17th, 2019 letter, and work that wording out and have it back for our, our Monday meeting. And that we can then share with ODOT and citizens and whoever. Okay? That's my motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll resecond it.
Okay. Further, further discussion?
That's good clarity.
Okay. So since it's my motion, I guess I'll, I'll vote in support of the motion, Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got clarity. I want to thank all of you for helping. Thank those of you who are citizens in Terriban for coming today and being part of this process also. And hopefully this will be a good starting point to move forward with improvements. So, good, okay.
Just, just for clarity, legal and CDD will take the first stab at a draft, work with the road department and ODOT and hopefully have language that captures what you folks want and have it to you in time to look at it in advance of Monday.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Okay. Any other...
So that letter may be able to be used at the OTC, you know, to kind of show how we came together in central Oregon. I'm just thinking, where, where, who wants to see the letter, you know? So the director and OTC maybe.
Okay, yeah. All right, any other business this afternoon? Tom?
No.
Any other updates? Anything? Okay, good. Then we'll adjourn today's meeting. Thank you for coming.